I'd like to call the order the Avalon Hospital Municipal, Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting Tuesday, July 20th. Could we have a roll?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
I'm not here, this is the hospital board.
I am sorry, I didn't hear you say hospital board.
I'm sorry. It's okay.
Okay.
I'm here.
Thank you. I apologize.
Not a problem. Announcements?
None this evening.
None this evening. Written communications?
None this evening.
Presentations? I see we have a presentation from the CEO.
We do, we have a presentation tonight from John Frayle, the CEO of the hospital, who will be explaining the role of the city council as it relates to the hospital. I know this has been an item of discussion and at the request of Councilmember Cassidy, Mr. Frayle has agreed to be here tonight to articulate this for us. So, thank you, John.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for inviting. I'm always happy to come into the city council and talk about the hospital. So, I don't plan on spending a lot of time, but I hope I can answer some questions. And so, I'm always one that likes to look back in time to see how did we get to where we are today, what happened that created the arrangement we had. And so, my research tells me that back in 1957, the residents of this community decided by a majority vote to build a hospital. And that's now called the new hospital. It's the one that's up the street now known as Catalina Island Medical Center. The other night at our open house with the Chamber of Commerce, people were saying to me, "I can't believe our new hospital is 55 years old." So, putting that all in perspective, and as you probably know, over the years, the city operated the hospital and then they had a few outside relationships to manage the hospital. And in 1990, they decided, the city, that is, who owns the hospital, you still own the hospital, all the assets and the land, decided to create a, an operating agreement, a lease and operating agreement. And that worked fairly well until 2003, I'll take that back, until 19, no, 2003, I'm right, 2003. And they decided that they wanted to modify that a little bit, and that's the operating agreement that we work with today. It's between the city of Avalon, serving as the Avalon Hospital Board of Trustees with the Avalon Development Medical Corporation, which has its own Board of Governors. And Rod Muller is with me tonight, Dr. Muller is the President of the Avalon Development Medical Corporation. That lease was entered into and it goes until 2033, so we have a few more years on it. It automatically renewed after its first 10 years last fall in 2013. So, we're in the second 10-year round. If all goes well and we continue the relationship, it will automatically renew for two five-year terms, which brings it up to 2033. So, putting that into perspective. So, the question is, what's the role of the city council serving as the Avalon Hospital Board of Trustees? And it's basically that as landlord. You are the landlord of all the assets that are at the facility. The Avalon Development Corporation has all the responsibility to operate the hospital, oversee quality, bring physicians and employees. The employees are employees of the Avalon Development Medical Corporation. We're responsible for all the financing, including borrowing any money. We do get help from the community, as you know, through a half a percent sales tax, which was passed a number of years ago that goes to the hospital to help with its operations. The last couple of years, that's represented by about $500,000 a year, which we're very grateful for and appreciative for from the citizens to, and the visitors, to tax themselves to make sure that we have continued hospital services here. So, the Avalon Development Medical Corporation has nine board members. I mentioned Dr. Muller is the President, Conrad Ovegar is Vice President, Lisa Moss is Secretary, Bee Van Evere is a member, Paul De Meyer is a member, Ross Turner is a member, and Rich Haynes is a member, as well as Bruce Wallace. We have nine people sitting on the board. It went up from seven back in July, the board decided that they wanted more input from the community, so we increased it. Our bylaws will allow us to have between five and 11 members. So, we have nine now. We have one vacancy and we're working on the possibility of filling that in the near future. So, when information comes to you, as it is tonight, it's in the context of the landlord. And so, we provide you with our financial operations. We also provide you with our annual audited financial report. And if you were to look at the operating and lease agreement, the city is allowed to communicate, obviously, with us through me or through the board members for any information that they might be interested in knowing on what's going on with the building or those things that are responsibility of the landlord. There are no operational responsibilities that the city has in operating the hospital. So, I want to also mention a little bit about the foundation. Back in 1957, when the Avalon Hospital was established, a few years later, they decided that they would like to have a foundation, a 501(c)(3) public benefit corporation whose purposes are charitable in nature, to help the hospital raise money. And the foundation's been very active over those almost 40, 50, actually 55 years now. And they're very active today. And they have a board of directors that's represented by Carol Reynolds, the President, Misa Bradley is Vice President, I'm sure some of these names are familiar to you because they're community residents, Maggie Mackey is the Secretary, John Lovrich, the hospital CFO, serves as treasurer, Linda Baron is a member of the foundation board as MI, Jessica Herzog is also a member, Yolanda Montano, Yoli, Walt Puffer, Ken Putman, and Scott Van Evere. And we have four associate members on the foundation. They are Sherry Klein, Connie Frayle, Blaney Haggonar, and Sue Hoffman. So, we're well represented in the community, both at the Avalon Development Medical Corporation and as the foundation, and certainly with the city council. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Hopefully, that helped.
No, that's great.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Well, at any time, I extend an invitation for you to come up as a group or as individuals. I'm happy to share with you what it is going on. I like to come back periodically, as I have for the last couple of years that I've been here, to answer any questions, just to let you know how we're doing. And happy that you invited me tonight. Any other questions on any other things that you might have while I'm here?
So, you're going to be 100% responsible for building the new hospital?
No, it's the landlord thing.
Sure, why not? Why not?
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big challenge for us, you know, and we're trying to study exactly what are the needs, what's the island's needs going to be for healthcare in the future? Where's the money going to come from? We're going to have to work with the city on that. I made it clear, I think, that the city owns the physical plant, so that's an obligation. And we have some challenges right now. One of them is the, you know, the emergency generator that we're going to have to replace. And that's, that's an asset of the hospital that we're going to have to figure out how to replace it under the guidelines of the South Coast Air Quality Management District who did provide us with a citation a few months ago. But we're making progress on that, but we are going to have to talk about how do we pay for it.
And what is the expense of that emergency generator?
Well, the generator is one expense, the whole project, and I like to look at project cost at this level, could be $160,000 to $170,000. Generators, the filters that are required, the switchgear that we have to put in and so forth, probably around $75,000. And the rest would be installation approval, because we have to go through the state because we are a hospital to get approval. So, it's a pretty, pretty significant project.
So, the importance of the state of affairs of the hospital and its functioning for that generator is really important, isn't it, sir? I mean, let's say there was a power outage?
Exactly.
That's the whole function of it?
And that's why we have to have it. And it is an emergency generator, and it works well, I might tell you. It's a 1983 John Deere generator. And we only use it if the power goes out. We do have to test it periodically, and so we keep appropriate amount of diesel fuel onsite. We have to be able to run it for four consecutive days. Hopefully, then if there were a disaster, we'd be able to get refueled. The problem that we had is that units built in 1983 didn't contain particulate matter in their exhaust. And our biggest problem is the fact that we're adjacent to the school. So, there's a state regulation that has a lot of stipulation, and the one that puts us out of compliance is our proximity to the school, so we're going to have to replace that. There are no adapters that we can put on the generator to mitigate the diesel issue. But good news is we don't have to use it very often. The other good news is it's a good unit and it does work, and we've done it on it.
How, what's the lifespan of that? I mean, right now, I know we have, we should get it replaced with a cleaner burning energy efficient type of a unit. And we've looked into that and like, you just said, did you say it was $100,000 to replace it?
I think the whole project cost could be as much as $160,000.
Right, okay. Did you, are you looking into another John Deere, or do we have an idea of what type?
We've got a couple of quotes that we're entertaining right now. John Deere is not one of them. What we're doing is working with the South Coast Air Quality Review of the Municipal District, making sure we're going to fit within their guidelines of what it is that we'd like to put in there. It's a 50 kilowatt hour unit, so we've got a couple of proposals in front of them for consideration. They have, we have to apply, they have to approve, and then we can move forward with the purchase order and getting approval from the state and go through installation.
Are there any other pressing issues that the hospital might be facing in the near future that you can foresee?
People could pay their bills on time, that would be great. That goes along with the, with the challenges. But not really, I mean, other than the fact that we are under decree to replace or significantly modify this building by 2030, that's 15 years from now, so we've got, you know, some planning underway to do that. And then, of course, that's going to require us some financing and come up with a plan to, to take care of that as well. So, we've got a, you know, a good supportive board that are helping us with that, and we'll move forward and get the answer and bring it back to you folks as we progress.
Thank you very much.
Anything else on the board?
No, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
The public might have a question. Anybody in the public have a question for John? Hearing none, thank you, John. Oral communications. Any member of the public can comment to the board for an item not on the agenda, no action will be taken, the speaker should limit their comments to three minutes. This is the hospital, Jack.
I read it.
Chomping at the bit. I see no consent calendar, no general business, chair has no report, members report?
None.
None? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of January 20th. Roll call Denise?
Now only.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and I'll lead it this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I really don't have much of an invocation other than if we could please keep Jerry Giaccone and Marshall Paul in our prayers and in our thoughts. They've been, one was injured and the other one experienced some health difficulties and our thoughts are out to them. Thank you.
I don't have any this evening, Mayor.
Written communication?
None that I'm aware of.
We have a presentation.
We do, we have a presentation this evening from Ron Garcia and Jeff Lawrence of Southern California Edison. I believe there is a PowerPoint that goes along with it, and you have a hard copy of the deck at your desk as well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Jeff Lawrence, project manager for Southern California Edison, Stage Two mandatory water rationing project. Just want to provide you an update as to where we're at with our Stage Two water rationing project and share some statistics with you today. Currently, as of January 15th, Middle Ranch Reservoir is at 277 acre feet. We did see about a two acre foot increase in the reservoir level after the rain event on January 10th and 11th, which brought us about an inch and a quarter over at the Middle Ranch Reservoir. So, some encouraging results there, but obviously, we still need some, some more rainfall. This next slide, what you're looking at is the last two months, November and December, compared to 2013. You'll see we're still trending in the right direction with our water conservation efforts. In November, we reduced water conservation, reduced water use, I should say, by 13.53%. And that was while visitor counts increased by over 38%. In December, we saw a large increase, similar to the trend that we are seeing since August, reducing water use by over 35%. That while visitor counts increased in December by over 16%. November saw a 3.2 acre foot reduction in, in water use, while in December, we're actually able to reduce water consumption by over nine acre feet, 9.02 acre feet. Very encouraging results. This next slide takes a look at our baseline period where our customers' water allotments are based. So, it's looking at 2012, since the beginning of August when we implemented Stage Two, through the end of December. We've been able to reduce water use by 28.47%, that while visitor counts have increased by 23.32%. For comparison's sake, in the month of November, the state of California reported that they've been able to reduce water consumption by 9.8%. So, we're seeing some really positive results in the community. This shows you the code enforcement violations, essentially violations of non-essential, water being used for non-essential purposes. Shows you a breakdown. The most significant violations that we're seeing are water runoff and the time of day that people are watering. They, they've been tapering off. The most recent violations that we're seeing are the use of water to maintain the level in pools and spas. We are now actively enforcing that pool covers must be in place if you're going to be using potable water to maintain your water level. So, and the community's been very responsive in complying or requesting an extension to give their pool cover installed. So, we're seeing great support there. This is a slightly different slide than I've shown in previous months. Beginning the week of November 9th is when we started seeing our second violations for customers who have exceeded their water allotment. And that results in customers being subject to the installation of a flow restricting device. So, the, the line chart shows you the percentage of billing periods that closed that week and that percentage of those bills that actually resulted in a violation. We're consistently right around 4% to 5%. And then, a big drop off at the beginning of January, we didn't have any flow restrictors installed. Thus far, we've had 138 flow restrictors issued for installation.
Do you, do you have a breakdown of which are kind of like commercial properties, whether they be vacation rentals versus, versus residential?
We, we don't have that information in our database when it comes to residential accounts. We don't have a way of deciphering if they're full-time residents or if they're, they're vacation rentals, because they're on the same rate essentially. We could, we could provide a breakdown of the commercial accounts that we have versus residential accounts.
Just curious.
This next slide here is our Stage Three forecast. We haven't seen much of a change in our forecast currently, assuming no, little to no rainfall the rest of this year. If we weren't to see the results that we're seeing with Stage Two rationing now, we could potentially be in Stage Three rationing in July of this year. But with sustained results in Stage Two, we could delay that till October of this year. And that, like I said, that doesn't include any, any rainfall. So, as we see additional rainfall, it could prolong the need to go into Stage Three. The last slide is just our contact information. If there are any customers that would like to report a, a water use violation, you can call that number and report it, and we'll send our co-enforcement inspectors out to research the issue. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ron Garcia, he has an update on our, our water rate cases.
Just real quick, does the council have any comments on, on this report? Or on the public? Okay, then let's, thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff and our neighbors. My name is Ronald Garcia, Region Manager, Public Affairs. Recently, January 1st, there was water rate increases and most families who take water from Southern California Edison Company, commercial and residential, would have received a letter sharing with them the rate cases was settled and the rates took effect of January 1st. So, I just wanted to quickly share how we got there. Just want to make it really clear, and it's important, that our customers fully understand that we maintain the water system and associated equipment and that it has been repaired and upgraded, our system has, in a prudent, cost-efficient manner. And so, through the years, we invested pretty close to $15 million and have not recovered that capital cost. So, working with the island consortium, Catalina Island Consortium and Southern California Edison Company Consortium, made up of key individuals and organizations on the island, we talked about and worked together, how could we recover those investments and be fair to all? And so, in 2013, an all-party settlement was reached. And prior to that, in 2011, Southern California Edison also reached a settlement with the same consortium regarding change the rate designs for water rates so that they be fair for all on the island. On October 14th, the California Public Utilities Commission voted and approved that all-party settlement, the Edison Company and the consortium, and the rates are effective January 1st. So, what does it mean to our customers on the island? On the average, we can expect that they're going to receive a 7.5% rate increase overall. And depending on the rate that our customer's on, they could experience a rate decrease and a significant rate decrease, or a commercial, some rate decreases as well. So, other provisions of the settlement included Southern California shareholders would incur $2.5 million that we would write off our capital investment, and then another 205,000 disallowance for operations and maintenance on the facilities here on the island water grid. And then, another nearly $808 million from the Catalina water-based rates will be recovered from our SCE system-wide electric customers over the course of a year. So, all those people on the overland in our 50,000 score mile are each going to pay about nine cents more a month to cover that other $8.8 million for the water rates here on Catalina. So, we're encouraging our customers, residents, remember, each one of our customers may be on a different rate. It could be a commercial, it could be a residential, a multifamily, a domestic income qualified rate. Each one would have received a different letter. And to fully understand what they are going to be receiving at rates, we're encouraging them to call 1-800-367-8851 to talk about their bills. And again, we remind them that while they're on the phone, to take advantage of care rates if they're eligible, medical baseline, or just to talk about how they can reduce their electric rates, water rates and gas rates. So, just wanted to be upfront with you to again remind you about a 7.5% on the average rate increase effective January 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Garcia? Public? Thank you, Ron, very much. Appreciate that.
Just one thing, Mayor, for most of next week, I will be out of the office at the city manager's department meeting for the League of California Cities in San Francisco. And I have a report out at the meeting following that.
Thank you. City attorney's report?
I have some good news for the city council. This is going to be coming to you for formal action in about four weeks from now. As you recall, many years ago, when the state took over the redevelopment agency and dissolved that, you still had bonds that were outstanding. Those bonds are going to be in existence for another 18 years. But since that date, the rate, interest rates have come down. And so, there's a program that we've used and you'll be able to, to use later this year, which will enable the city or the redevelopment agency to refinance those bonds. And what will happen is the savings that will be resulting from the refinance of those bonds will be split among the successor agency parties. And that's going to mean that the city, based upon our estimates, is going to get an additional $1.3 million over the next 18 to 19 years. It'll start this year in September, you get about $50,000, and then every year thereafter, about $70,000. So, these are monies that you wouldn't get that by refinancing the bonds, you'll be able to get. We have to wait until all the audits and the financial figures are done, but we can start the process in four weeks, the time that you do the ROPS. And then, that'll start the bond process, and then we'll come back later when, once the financing figures are all done, to actually issue those bonds. And again, we're going to just take the old bonds, reissue new bonds at a much lower rate, and the city gets the benefit of that. Again, about, our estimates are about $1.3 million extra in, in extra revenues, and the refinancing of this and all the cost will be included in that bond refinancing. So, it's not going to be out of pocket to the city, you're just going to get more money. So, that's going to come in, in four weeks, but we thought, we just kind of finalized the program over the weekend, and so, I just thought I'd let you know at the earliest opportunity.
Thanks, goodness. Thank you.
Is it general fund money?
It will be general fund money.
Wow. Okay. Councilmember report?
Councilwoman, Cindy, would you like to? Um, yeah, I actually have quite a few. I attended on January 7th, the Gateway Cities Council of Government Monthly Meeting. And I have had a couple persons in the community ask me exactly what the Gateway Cities COG is. So, I just wanted to mention that the, we are a member of the Gateway Cities alongside 27 other cities from Long Beach to Monticello to La Habra Heights. And the goal is to improve the life of more than 2 million residents of Southeast Los Angeles County, of which we are obviously part of. And the main initiatives of the Gateway Cities is, they include transportation, air quality, housing and economic development. And really, the ultimate goal is to work together, is neighboring communities to do better for each of ourselves and pool resources, rather than each community going after different projects and working on things independently. And with that, I re-mentioned that I am now a part of the Transportation Committee that works with the Gateway Cities. So, hopefully, that will help us to better our abilities here in Avalon to go after funding that we otherwise may not be able to go after. In addition to that, myself and Mayor Marshall attended the League of California Cities New Councilmember and Mayor Training this past week in Sacramento. I felt that it was invaluable information guiding and educating us in what we hope to accomplish in our roles and responsibilities up here. During that time, along with Councilmember Olson, we met with Assemblyman Patrick O'Donnell. That was more of a formal meeting, Mayor, Mayor Protem and myself, and had a wonderful conversation. And then, I also met informally with our state Senator Ben Allen while we were there as well. I, a couple other quick updates. I don't know if the rest of the council read the article that was in The Islander. I believe it was a paper some ago, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention because I felt that there was misleading comments in that article. And I'm sorry, I have it right here. This was an article written by Jesus Ruiz and Kathy Major. And the first paragraph states that despite the devastating loss of two Avalon residents, the city should not suffer any financial losses from the heavy storm that struck on Wednesday, December 30th. And they have quoted you, Ben, as, as part of that article, but I just wanted to say that I felt that that was very misleading, because we have had some, we have had some other losses and we have been discussing that ongoing, and it may not be all out there publicly yet, but I just hate to see something not misleading in the paper to suggest that we didn't have any losses when in fact, we are doing some emergency repairs and whatnot. So, I don't, I don't know if there's discussion that needs to happen on that. Okay. And then, I don't know, but I just wanted to also say, I've had a number of persons, I've requested formally with the city manager to discuss and review the fuel prices in town. I know that there's I know that there's been a lot of communication about that. I'm not the only member on our board here that's had questions come forward, and I believe that we are going to receive some sort of helpful explanation at some point going forward. But given the number of responses out in public, social media, and again, responses to us, that hopefully, we will have an update sometime soon, is to help us understand why our prices have not changed, whereas we've seen them change in every other community. And that's it for me.
Maybe this is the time to bring it up about the tariffs.
I've just kind of been kicking it around, I've talked to a lot of people about it. I would like to see if we can get direction from the city of Avalon to possibly send a letter to the PUC about possibly, if it's okay with my colleagues up here, to help us get a better understanding of the tariffs, because the way it's written up, there's certain things that are misunderstood about it. And I would like to see if we could send them a letter and have them give us some kind of direction or some kind of explanation about the tariffs. I know we've been trying to work with Edison for a while about getting meetings, and it seems to be whatever, everybody's been kind of busy. But with the help of my colleagues, I'd like us to give direction to the city to do that and get some explanation back to us.
And councilmember, I suspect that you're speaking of the water tariffs.
Correct.
Okay.
And the transfer of water and that kind of thing.
Correct.
Investigation would be nice.
If we can get back to us as soon as we can on that, whenever their next meeting will be or whatever, if we can.
Sure.
Okay?
Very good.
Councilmember Sampson?
Yes, please. First off, I'd like to, I'd like to go back to December 30th, the storm that we had, and I just want to say that I'd like to give my deepest condolence to the Tim Mitchell family and also Bruce Ryder's family for their losses. And I'd also like to say that I tip my hat and I totally commend the courage, the bravery, and heroism that I witnessed personally by our Harbor Department, our Sheriff's Department, and our Fire Department, and numerous civilians on the night of that storm. I think those departments actually saved lives that night, many lives. And I'd just like to give them a kudos out there and just thank them very much for what they did, their professionalism. And I'd just like the public to know that our city is well-protected, and I believe that we have very, very good professional departments that staff us and that watch over us. And that was just, that was just an amazing storm, and it's hard to be prepared for that. But we're going to go ahead and we're going to do what we can to research what happened and see what we can do to divert any kind of loss into the future. And I just want the city to know that. And I would actually like to ask the council if we could possibly do anything to direct our staff to bring in some kind of a professional oversight committee that might just give us some direction as to what we might do to better prepare ourselves, not that you could even prepare for what Mother Nature handed us that night, but I just, I've had an outcry from some of our community members as to what we're doing to possibly mitigate some of the loss that we had that night. And I just want to reassure you that we're all feeling the same loss. And I'd like to go ahead in a positive way and just let our community know that we're going to do all we can, but you are well-protected. And the loss of life was actually mitigated by the courage and bravery and heroism that was bestowed upon us that night by our professional crews out there. So I want to thank you all for doing that for us. I see Harbor Masters here, Captain Federal, and also Mike Krug, you tell your, tell your boys that they did an awesome job that night. And I tip my hats, all your departments, Dennis J. H. as well, from our Public Works. Also, my next subject I'd like to go to is recently, within the last couple of days, we had some taggers come and deface Avaloni Point and a couple of different rocks out on Pebly Beach Road. Avaloni Point is, to Avalon is what Half Dome is to Yosemite. And it's, it's one of our icons of Avalon, and we had some, some taggers come out there and put their logos on there. Anyway, there's, there's, it happened about five different places out there. So I want to ask the community, if you saw anybody out there within the last few days with the spray can, or anybody that was out there tagging, I believe the, there was a name out there that was actually put out there. We're going to try to clean that up as soon as possible all along that road, but we want to find out who did that. And we will prosecute them to the full extent of the law if we can. And if you have any information that leads to the arrest and conviction of whoever did this, please contact investigator and Deputy Lloyd Luna at the Avalon Sheriff's Station, or Jeff Flotree also, down at the Avalon Sheriff's Station. If anybody is willing to put out a reward for the arrest and conviction of the people who did this, just contact Ben Harvey if you'd like, and we'll try to find them. But I want to let you guys know that we were very offended by that, and we don't want to see that happen in our community anymore. It was quite a slap in the face, and it's not going to, we're not going to put up with it. So the Sheriff's Department is definitely logging this, and they're doing an investigation on it, and they're doing all they can to try to find out who did it. But any help that the public would like to give us would be very helpful, so we can allow this to happen into the future, if possible. And for the most part, I think that's all I have to announce tonight.
And a follow-up to Mr. Sampson's. If you want to do it anonymously, there's a box right outside the chamber door that is, one person has a key furlough, Lieutenant, Director, Captain, and if you want to drop a report in there, nobody will know about it. I, I was in Sacramento last week for the League of California Cities Revan Tax Committee and the League of California Cities Community Services Committee. And the agenda for Revan Tax had X333, 13 things on it. Community Services had only 12 things. Part of this is the first meeting of the year, they have three meetings, and they possibly meet at the annual conference. The purpose of the committees is to review legislation that's pending and to recommend a position to the League Board as to whether they should support it, oppose it, or amend it. And the first meeting was basically to give a little legislative overview and then talk about the goals of the League and also the goals of individual committees. And so we were there, I guess spent six hours one day and seven hours the other day, and our next meeting is in April in beautiful Ontario. I brought back material for the city manager and the council to review, so I'll get copies of it in your boxes.
Thank you.
If you do. And I think that's it.
Just like to have a shout-out to the Catalina Island Company this evening. As you know, tonight, they're opening Catherine's Terrace out of Wisconsin Beach. We apologize for not being there, but as they can see, we are sitting here. So hopefully, we will be able to take a look at the new facility. We're very excited for them. Mayor's report? Yes, I was also at the League, and it was wonderful. I want to give kudos to the city manager, to Scott, and other people from BB&amp;K who have come to us, since we're one of few cities that gets elected in April. A lot of the other ones are elected in November. So they came to us to help get us up to snuff, so that we're, so that we were going to be more prepared as we moved forward. So I want to thank you for the work. A lot of it was just a lot of reinforcement of what we've learned, which was really, really wonderful. Just some of the other little highlights, and Cindy didn't get into it, but social media was very interested, and I know she's going to be sharing that with staff. And goal-setting is very important, and I'm very excited that we're on the way to our goal-setting. You know, we've got our 10, 12, 14 goals, and we're going to be working towards those and letting the community knows, know what those are, because that creates transparency and of course, accountability on our part. So that was very, very good. They also talked about the use of ad hoc committees to get work done since we're so few and our staff is so limited. The neat thing about this conference was, most of the cities are small cities. Long Beach, LA, San Francisco, those guys weren't there. But it's these small towns, rural San Joaquin Valley and that kind of thing were there. So it was nice to share with those people, small budgets, you know, again, but we felt a little bit, a little more on top of things because of the work of our staff. They talked about term limits, a lot of cities have term limits, so that is something that I will be bringing up in the future to the council. And there was just, just a whole lot. So that was the highlight of those. And I think, oh, and then on Saturday, I attended the opening, the ribbon-cutting for the art gallery that's now located in the, in the bank building. So if you want to go in and purchase art, there's a way you go online and purchase the art, and they ship it to you or give it to you. So I see Val and a few people in the audience who were there, it was well-attended, and please go and see our local artists at work. Okay. That's it for Mayor's report. Oral communication. I believe, Mr. Garcia, did you want to step up at this time? And this is where you may address the council, no action will be taken at this time, and we try to limit you to three minutes.
Thank you, Honorable Members of the City Council. Tomorrow, I'll be visiting our principal at the local high school to share with her that February 1st is the deadline for students, seniors to apply for Edison scholarships. And Edison Company this year will give $1.2 million of Edison scholarships to students who are planning to pursue college career or college studies in science, technology, engineering, or math, the STEM fields. So the application deadline is February 1st, and the reason I want to share it at council, for those that are in the listening audience or monitoring this meeting by television, you may not have a member of your family here on the island, but over town, you might. Please share with them that we're going to be giving 30 scholarships valued at $40,000 each. And last year at North High School in Torrance, I gave a scholarship to one of the students who was totally surprised, so was his teacher, they all broke down in tears, and I was moved too. This student was so excited. Applicants must have a GPA of 2.8 or better, and again, students from low-income families and underserved communities are especially encouraged to apply. And just want to share that since 2006, Edison International has awarded nearly $4 million in scholarships to 460 scholars. So please share that information. I know that some of us depend on scholarships so that our kids can get that valuable college education. And this evening, when I walked in, I came in with checks in my satchel, didn't realize that I'd see Kristi Lynn and Jordan Monroe. So please, would you join me at the podium so that I can make a presentation to you on behalf of Southern California Edison, Edison International, Jordan Monroe, and Kristi Lynn for your activities, your involvement in the organization? And you solicited a grant for the Island Radio for Catalina and Beyond, the Performing Arts Foundation, a check from Southern California Edison for $2,500. Thank you. Earlier in the year, Christine, Kristi Lynn received a check for $5,000 to the Catalina Island Women's Foundation. And then tomorrow, I'm going to be visiting with Jordan, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to be visiting with Kristi Thorntson, Thorntson, and Rhonda Kalyish, who applied for a grant for Choices, Choices Youth Prevention Intervention Leadership and Activity Programs, and we have a check for them of $5,000.
Wow.
Edison Company through the years, not patted ourselves on the back or pounded our chest, but we have been making investments in Avalon, and we continue to do so and will in the future. So thank you for requesting grants and for the work you do. We very much appreciate it on behalf of Jeff, myself, the Edison Company.
I spoke to many of you about my passion for what's going on in the town here, and I'd like to read this letter, once everybody gets it. If you reaffirm what I've been talking about, and maybe for other people in the city to I think we all know that from the mole to the Pebly Beach, most of our people and food supplies, building supplies come from that area, come into town. As a part of your planned transportation Saturday, we must include the growth of Avalon by balancing the infrastructure with current and new developments. The current new development of the Plaza area requires official critical review of traffic flow from the boat dock and Pebly Beach businesses into Avalon from the east side of town to the west side through Beacon, which starts with Sumner, Metropole, to Marilla and Casino Way. These represent well over half the residential access and hotel, restaurants, and gift shop locations in the downtown area. Currently, the truck route from Pebly Beach is Clarissa to Beacon, west to Metropole, and west to Marilla. The congestion at Crescent and Clarissa, Beacon and Sumner will be monumental and dangerous because of the mixed pedestrian and vehicle traffic. It can only be solved by rerouting entry into the city from Pebly Beach Road to behind the Riviera Block to Third Street, and then continuing through the Plaza and Sumner Avenue, ending at Metropole, as a regular vehicle and truck route connecting east and west Avalon. This is the only logical access available to alleviate excessive traffic on the corners of Beacon and Sumner and Crescent Clarissa, and enhance the ability for growth in this city. Displaced parking spots in the new route could be consolidated into the current Parker Court parking area behind the Sheriff's Station by building a multi-level parking garage to handle residential business and overflow parking for Vons customers, accessed by the walkway between Catalina Lodge and the new, Catalina Lodge and the new, and from the new museum, accessed by the driveway next to the laundromat, and accessing the parking garage from the new Third Street. This suggestion is for your review, but immediate action is needed if you let the traffic flow grow on these street corners without solution and action. And plus, remember, we now have approximately 4,000 people per week from cruise ships, mixing with transportation, passengers walking in and out of Avalon through the intersections of Clarissa and Crescent. This means a lot to me. I have 10 locations in this town, six of them are west of town. And the traffic is going to be at the new Vons and that new corner with all the business developing, the growth of this town, need to be addressed in your study and acted on immediately, because Vons wants to be open, bless them, they have a great product and a great location, and they want to be open by next May of 2016. Thank you for your time, and I hope you guys jump.
Thank you, Jeff. I would like to just kind of add to that, without a big discussion. As you know, in the general plan, that was, that was the route that was laid out quite a long time ago, and, and it was, came to consensus by the Island Company and a lot of the stakeholders in town. And I really think that this, we should be taking a look at this. And I don't know sadly, if, if, if this were to happen sooner than later with the stakeholder and this all getting together, I don't know if that would change the configuration with, with the flow of the location of the loading dock for Vons, for example. I don't know. But I, Jack, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I would like the planning departments, I would like this to be reviewed in some seriousness.
Let me correct you, not the load- Let me correct you, not the loading dock. It's the corner of Beacon and Clarissa where you have six ways to get across the street and traffic, and mixed between the traffic and trucks and people going back and forth. Who, what do you call them? The, the tour buses from the Island Company Avalon Tours are going to come around Beacon and go up and come back, and somebody's going to get killed on both corners.
No, 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 I, no, I hear that, but I was, I was thinking of a different, another little scenario to add to that, so, but thank you for your clarification. Okay. Any other oral communications? Okay, bean then, consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Oh.
Janice Hall, 334 Clarissa. I think this is directed to Mr. Campbell and Mr. Harvey, because I'm just confused about, I hear story polls on the new Vons and then no story polls, and is there procedurally a two-week period where there should be story polls before a meeting? And what about tomorrow's meeting? And what's happening?
Mayor, would you like me to respond to that?
Please.
Sure. So for clarification, the Planning Commission is hearing, is considering, I should say, a revised site plan for the proposed Vons project at their meeting tomorrow evening. And depending on the outcome of that decision, there could be story polls that follow.
Other oral communications? Consent calendar, there's none, general business?
Well, actually, Mayor, this is a little bit of a typo. Apologize for not bringing this up during announcements. There actually are eight items on the consent calendar. Shame on us, we, we've got general business listed twice, but there's actually a consent calendar section as well as a general business section. So on the consent calendar this evening, you have eight items. I'll go through those here quickly. You have actions, although not from the December 16th and the January 6th, you only have the January 6th actions on this consent calendar. Expenditures, three different expenditures, one warrants in the amount of approximately $1.2 million, an EFT in the amount of about $175,000. Payrolls, three of them in the amount of $600,000. You have the annual report between, for the agreement between the city and Hamilton Pacific. You have the quarterly treasurer's reports, as well as the treasurer's investment policy. We have the resolution to throw in a proposal for a call for projects for the Ferry Boat Formula Program, for a proposed restroom project on the Mall. We have a proposal for professional services with DUDAC for an audit of the city sewer system, and then authorization to fund emergency repairs at the lift station. Happy to talk about any of those items should you so desire.
I just had a comment on one, but does it need to be pulled? Do you sound appropriate time?
Sure.
On the expenditures, as I was going through it, there were several reimbursements for senior meals. And I know in months past, I'd asked for just kind of a, a reporting of senior meals, total expenditures, total receipts, something maybe over the last couple of years that helped put some context to what we're, what our expenses are with the senior meals. So I'm just wondering when I might be expecting that.
Uh, yes, sorry, the, that's for some reason fallen off the task list, but we can put that back on, and we could provide you with that in the month of February.
Great.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Did you say three? Did you go over three? I'm sorry.
Sure, we can.
Would you like to pull that, just to discuss later?
Sure, do you just want to vote on the rest and, and pull any others? Be happy to explain three.
Any others to be pulled?
Uh, number nine, please. Yeah, six, I'm sorry, six. Number six.
Number six. Six and nine, Joe, or just?
Yes, just six, just six.
And I have to abstain from the vote on January 6th. For consent here.
Move staff on one, two, four, five, seven, eight.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Other comment? And so you know I'm voting for everything but that, okay. Call for the vote?
All eyes.
Okay, so item number three, this is an annual report on the development agreement between the city and Hamilton Pacific. This is required as part of that agreement to show progress in certain areas, including affordable housing, certain infrastructure components, including the retaining wall and the bioxide injection system, the money put forward towards the purchase of a, of a fire truck. So this is stemming from the agreement that we do have with Hamilton Pacific. And if there are particular components of the agreement, I'd be happy to address that.
The one I was kind of interested in was the fire truck, the payment, how many payments have been made? Because I know they've amended this a few times, right?
We've amended this agreement, I believe, three times, and to date, we have received, I believe, three payments for the fire truck, so it's a little south of $20,000 so far.
Now, does that go into the fire fund, or does that just go into the general fund?
It goes to the, to the general fund. As far as I know, we don't have a specific account that we establish for those monies.
Can you put in the vehicle replacement fund?
Those also pull from the general fund.
Just to keep track of it?
Absolutely. However, on that, on that note, we are working on an improved system for that, as you know. We've, an updated inventory, and we are looking to more cleanly and accurately capture and allocate for that.
How would that be staffed if we have another fire engine?
There are no provisions in the agreement for the staffing. This simply is an item that's, that spells for the contribution of $175,000 for a fire truck. So it doesn't say anything about staffing, or garage, or bay, or anything for it.
Or time limit?
Or, no, it does not.
Or what did you say, sir?
The time limit? There's no time limit on it. And I know they've amended it before, but I, I just, I'd like to meet with the fire chief, not that, not here, but I'd like to be able to personally and discuss a few things about that. I'm pretty much okay with everything, but I would sure like to talk to him about this a little bit, and, you know, I'm not totally against this, but I would just get a little direction from him, and we could always amend it again.
You could, certainly could.
Can we amend that again?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm not really against all of it, but I just, I just think I need a little time, free time to talk to the fire chief and check on his needs and actually where the money goes, or what he needs to do.
Absolutely.
That's the reason I.
So we, we can set that meeting up. Councilmember Hernandez, we will do that.
Okay.
And then based upon your discussion, we will proceed how you might want to from that. Should you want to bring it back as an amended agreement, or whatever, or just for discussion, or however you see fit.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
So that means we would just hold this item over?
I don't believe that's what's being requested this evening, but if I.
I think we could go ahead with it. I don't have a problem with that, because we could always come back and amend, right?
Yes, you could.
And that's, well, once I talk to the chief and see what goes on, and if we need to be, we need to, if I feel that we need to come back, we can come back, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then I just have a question on the 18 units of affordable housing.
Okay.
So tell me the, tell me the status of any of that.
Okay, is Amanda here? Amanda, can you report out on that section? I'm sorry. Thank you, Amanda.
When Hamilton Cove came in to get approvals to build the 88 units out at Hamilton, that's what we're talking about, not the new project. The EIR said they had to provide housing, and our inclusionary ordinance also required housing. So for a total of 18 units. At the time, they proposed to build 17 of those units at Triana, and one unit was going to be out at Hamilton Cove as a manager's unit. They, Mike constructed 26 units at Triana. The Island Company purchased 16 of them to utilize for their own employee housing, and 10, um, nine of the remaining 10 are currently qualified as inclusionary housing. We're confirming that on a couple of them, but nine out of the 10 are intended to be inclusionary housing units.
Explain to me then what inclusion, include, what that means.
Inclusionary housing, our inclusionary housing is where you have a project that is going to create growth, and so you're, are obligated to provide some housing to accommodate that growth. It's inclusionary housing. Our code requires that you provide housing for 20%, if you are a business, 20% of your peak season employees. For housing projects, it's 20% of the units that you're building have to be inclusionary housing. So 20% of 88 is 17, roughly 18 units.
Okay, and then with regard to, the agreement provides that four of the 18 will be for moderate income residents. So, so what's the mix of who are in those nine units?
I don't have that page.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I.
No, that's my, my fault. Is Mike still here? Would you go ahead and help me? There are six middle-income units, four, no, five middle-income units, four moderate-income units, and one unit that did not have any income restrictions.
And the first five, I didn't hear what you said. Are, are what, low-income?
Middle-income.
Okay.
There was a time, if you recall, probably prior to most of you, except maybe only being on the council, the city actually had a housing trust fund several years ago that we funded one or two years, I believe, with part of the TOT. And that housing trust fund was to help provide housing for middle-income housing, and we set a parameter, I believe, of up to 200% of the area median, median income. Out of that trust fund, we did down payment assistance for two.
Four.
Two middle-income families.
So it looks as though, as he moves forward, no, no, so as, as this project moves forward, all the mitigation is already done, or no, we're looking at more? We're looking at?
No, we believe he has nine units on the books towards what he is required to provide for full build-out of 88 units.
Okay, so the balance is nine?
Roughly, yes.
Yeah? Nine of the 18 then?
Yes.
Okay. Can they be, when you talk about affordable housing, does that mean purchases, or is that also rental units?
It could, I think it can be either one.
Okay.
They just have to be affordable, and they have to have a recorded covenant restricting them to that category of affordability, I believe it's for 55 years.
Oh, okay, so if they move out, sell it, they've got to, there's something.
So for selling it, it needs to be, in order for it to remain inclusionary as a credit, housing credit, it has to be resold to someone in that same category. And for rental housing, it would have to remain affordable.
How does this selection project, process work for a rental? Do you have any idea? I mean, like how?
Well, we don't have rental housing yet. It's, so far, they've all been for purchased housing. I would anticipate it would be something similar to what Tremont Street Apartments does, is where you have to provide your income information, and you have to qualify for that income category before you'd be allowed to move into the unit. Similar to what they do at Eucalyptus Hill, Tremont, and Bird Park, you have to be certified and provide your financial information to show that you qualify for that income bracket.
Who would the governing body be of that process?
I don't think that has been determined, as to whether or not it would be the city's housing authority, or it would be an outside entity like Safran does Bird Park, SK Management does Tremont. I don't know the name of the company that does Eucalyptus Hill.
And there's, there's just a note that says, "To date, no affordable housing units at Hamilton Cove Project Site have, have been constructed."
The manager's unit for Hamilton Cove, there was one unit that was required to be built on-site, and the current development agreement allows for that to be built at Phase Two. The phases are defined as up to 10 units. So the, was it Phase Two? Or it may have been at the second, there's a second set of amenities that are supposed to go in at Hamilton Cove, another clubhouse, pool facility, and I believe the manager's unit is tied to construction of those amenities.
And again, help me out on the water deal? Water's okay there.
Well, you're talking about water allocations for, for housing units. It would fall under the tariffs as far as when, you know, the, the normal rules apply. So you submit your application, and depending on if you're Phase One or Phase Two, and if there's available water at Edison's determination, all the usual rules apply.
Hence the one, the desire for D cell. Right, Mike? Yeah, okay. Okay. Other comments? Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome. And I, Mike, excuse me, is there a fire truck at Hamilton Cove?
No.
Not yet.
It's not red.
Action, council?
I'll make a motion to accept and file a report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Additional comment? Call for the vote?
Okay, Mayor, then the second item that was pulled, I'm sorry.
All eyes.
Apologize, jumping the gun there. Trying to get the general business. If I could ask Audra McDonald, I saw her here in Mobile, she is coming to the podium. This is the, it's a resolution, we're putting in a request in the call for projects for potential restrooms at the Mall. So Audra has researched this.
Did you ask us a few questions, Joe?
Um, no, actually, I just wanted you to explain this a little more in depth, because I think it just looks like a really appealing thing, and it, if you've been to the restrooms at the Mall.
We need them, yes.
We need them, yeah. Jesse does a great job out there, but we still, we, we could give him a little bit of help by giving him some new rest, restrooms, because he does a great job out there with what he has to work with.
Um, so what this is, is MAP 21 was adopted in 2012, and it's the latest transportation bill that the federal government has passed. And it made some changes to how funding trickled down. In the past, the ferry formula, the ferry program was discretionary, so it was competitive, and the city had to compete with other ferry systems for the funds. In 2011, I believe, we were successful in, in our quest to get some money, $2.4 million, to help fix the underneath of the Mall and add shade structure on top. This funding is formula-funded based on passenger counts and the route, the length of the route. Catalina Express assisted in compiling all this data to submit to the state. And then if you see an attachment there, it shows our funding mark based on the information that was submitted. Avalon is the highest funded entity in all of those that are eligible for the funding. At first blush, I thought it might be a good idea to add this money on to the existing grant that we have, because we don't know how much that's going to come in at. But it, that's not allowable use, so it is pretty restrictive. The restrooms are 100% eligible, so it seemed to me that it was a, a good fit.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Our, our, our visitors deserve it, as.
And I don't think we'll have any problem using $1.2 million to fix the restrooms up there.
All right. Thank you very much. That's great work.
And our match comes from the Harbor Department? That's where that comes from? Our 20% match is.
Does a match come from the Harbor Fund?
We, we could pull that from the Harbor Fund, yeah, it's in the Harbor District.
So you're probably looking at July, though, or something like that, this is?
We, we'd have to be award, I mean, as if I understand Audra, we'd have to officially be awarded this. I mean, you explain the process a little bit.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so, so the formula funding is based on a calculation. This was passengers and route miles. So we're essentially guaranteed it as long as we meet the criteria, the requirements, to spend the money. Then the money is, is allocated to the city, and then there's a long process to actually get the money earmarked for the city. What we did with the, the other grant money is we asked that the money be transferred over to the F T A, so that Metro could be our, we could be a recipient through Metro, makes it a little bit easier, so I'm, I'm guessing when we get this money, we would probably want to go that same route, so there's some continuity years before we see, um, new restrooms, honestly.
Just hold it a little while longer.
My hopes up.
So that gives you plenty of opportunity to budget the match, right?
Good.
And you could, it could also be in the capital improvements program that's being developed, and, and then that way, each year, budget time, you can, you can put a little bit in there.
Great. Good work.
Yeah. Counselor, your pleasure.
Move to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the Ferry Board Formula funds to reconstruct Caprio Mall Ferry Terminal Restrooms.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Okay. Comment, public comment? Call for the vote? All eyes? Moving on to general business?
Yes, Mayor, we have three items under general business this evening. The first item is a follow-up to a presentation that you may recall receiving a couple meetings ago. This is a proposed resolution which would add properties within the city's jurisdictions to be eligible for the California Hero Program wherein property owners could finance energy efficiency measures and habit charts on their property tax bill. The city attorney has prepared this item, so I will defer to him.
Again, just to recap, this is a program that is throughout the state. Over a hundred and ninety public entities, cities and counties have adopted this, and basically, if you would join it, allows residents in Avalon to get a certain kind of financing, to do solar panels, solar improvements, also water efficiency programs, so they could use this to install some plumbing fixtures in their house to, to reduce water. And so we're asking you to pass the resolution so that the city can join in the program, and so that the residents can take advantage of this. There is no cost to the city for this program.
Counselor?
Were there being any repercussions to people that do, do not want to participate?
None.
Not, not on their tax bill? So, so only the people that willfully want to get involved with this program and do the retrofitting on their houses would be held to, to the higher taxes on their property?
Well, it, it's, it's, what it is, is they can either pay for it on their own upfront all at once and not participate in the program, or if they wanted to, they can take part of this program and spread the payments out over a number of years. And so this program allows the option of people that maybe don't have the money all, all at once, to, to make these kind of improvements, to spread them out over a couple of years, and it's just collected on their taxes. This is a mechanism for the collection of taxes. It's not only a tax, it's just the way you collect the bill, rather than send people in, in individual bill each month or each year, is it just goes on their tax bill.
It's like financing your solar panels, basically.
It's just basically the county, the, the county of Los Angeles is going to be volunteering as the tax collector, or, or as the bill collector for the, these projects. Again, so the city doesn't have to do it, or, or some other people.
It just spreads it out over time, but here you're paying the price.
It's an incentive-
Yeah?
To get involved with it and, and to get your home hooked up with solar. And, okay, I see. Very, very good. Is this the, um, is this the item on the agenda that Doug Lord came in with the gentleman?
Yes, yes.
About this program a few weeks ago?
Same one.
Okay.
Counselor?
Public?
Public, would you like to comment before we go?
We want a motion?
Move that the city council adopt a resolution to consent to inclusion of properties in the California Hero Program and authorize execution of an amendment to the Western Riverside Council of Governments, J P A.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We moved in second, other comments? Call for the vote? All eyes. Item ten.
Yes, Mayor, this item, you may recall, was, was discussed at the December sixteenth council meeting. At that time, the city council directed us to sharpen our pencils, so to speak, to come back and make some revisions to the proposed policy wherein certain components were removed, and certain employees might be reexamined as far as their eligibility for reimbursement. We have done that, we have, there was an item, excuse me, there's an attachment, I should say, it looks like a little fine print spreadsheet that you probably saw at your seat. What we did was we took the initial worst-case scenario forecast of twenty-seven thousand dollars potentially for reimbursement over the entire fiscal year, and we reexamined all employees that might potentially need that, and we scaled back those that are currently receiving the public safety cellphone reimbursement stipend of twenty-five dollars, and we reset them to that in the spreadsheet. So that's the Harbor Department, that's the Fire Department. The savings in the, in the forecast is approximately ten thousand dollars over what you saw at the December sixteenth council meeting. In addition to that, we also removed from the policy a component to reimburse for hotspots, so now you just have four potential reimbursement components, cellphone, smartphone, data plan, and tablets. Maximum that could be reimbursed based upon department head and city manager approval is about eighty-five dollars monthly. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have on this.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for doing that. I know I gave you a little bit of a hard time at the last discussion of this, but I appreciate your efforts. The only item I noticed was that I want to make sure it wasn't an oversight for Harbor Master Tablet. He doesn't have a-
He, in his professional determination of need, he decided that was not something that was required for him to do his job as he used to do it. He is in regular communication with me over the weekend and the evening, I suspect he's largely using his smartphone.
Perfect.
So from the original amount that was quoted, how much are we going to, did you bring that down?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars?
Over the fiscal year. Now, I should add a caveat. The cellphone reimbursement is an item of negotiation with the Harbor and the Fire Association, and without divulging anything about the negotiations, it is something that, that either association could propose in those process, and we could bring something back to you if they, if the association wanted us to do that. But my recommendation at this point is to set it to the amount that they currently have in their M O U, and if they do decide that they want to move forward to the higher amount, well, then we'll, of course, bring that back to you as part of the counterproposal when we do that.
So right now, it's just selling the twenty-five dollars?
That's right.
No retroactivity or any that?
Most companies are already doing this, most larger companies, so. So I see it's a great idea.
The city already on a plan right now for that?
Least we can do.
With the cellphones and everything?
We, we don't have a policy currently, which-
We don't, do you know?
No, we don't. And so what we have currently are people using their own devices without being reimbursed and without a policy explaining how that should be used. And so we felt that that was prudent to do that. This policy does allow for you to have, and this is only if your position has been designated as one that is essential to your, to your job function. So it's not just, you know, if you want to get a cellphone, we'll reimburse you for it, it's if, if your department head thinks it's essential for you to do your job, and then at what level, they then put the, that in the schedule. If employees have a choice, if they're deemed to be needing to have this, they, if they don't want to use their personal phone, they can opt to have the city purchase a phone for them, and some people might want to do this because they don't want to commingle their personal phone with their city phone, because anything on the city phone could ultimately be discoverable if there was a request for information or a lawsuit, et cetera. So that's, anyway, but it, all, all those terms are laid out in the policy so that it's, it's clear as to what the rules of engagement are.
So we don't know really if it's cheaper to go through a big plan and get everybody a phone? Is it cheaper that way, or is it cheaper this way?
We, we didn't pursue that because a number of people opt to use their, their, they want to use their own phone so that they don't have to carry two phones. So I, I suspect that the volume of folks, we wouldn't have a big number of people on a, a big plan, so to speak, because we're going to have a lot of people that really want to maintain their, their own plan and their own phone so that they don't have to carry two different devices with them.
But, but if it's cheaper?
The city does participate in the Verizon's discount plan, so if you have a Verizon phone, you say fifteen percent.
Okay.
So I'm just looking into that. But anyway, I was also noticing on here where you have everybody listed down here, but I noticed the code's not on there, and to me, they seem like they're always out, one of the front runners out there to, on the scene, helping out everywhere, but would they code, would he? But there's no-
What I, what I should point out in that one-
There's no money attached, they're getting any money?
There's no reimbursement for code.
Reimbursement for them.
There's no reimbursement for code because each of our code enforcement officers has a city-provided phone-
Okay.
With a city-provided plan. And you'll see that-
So they carry two phones, but everybody else does? Is that correct?
Well, they, they do. They, they choose to, and, and actually, you know, there are going to be some people that do want that, but, you know.
All right.
Richard, they chose that because too many people got ahold of their cellphone number, and so now they have an unlisted one.
Even more reason, I think, somebody else would like to carry another phone. And if it'd be cheaper, that's the only reason I'm inquiring.
That's true.
Questions, right? Sorry.
I mean, if we're through this policy today, and then sometime down the line go, okay, we don't want you to research this, and blah, 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 you can always come back.
Sure.
Are we? After you.
Just a clarification on Annie's question. Was this intended to be retroactive?
You can provide direction in that department if you like. I mean, you did, we did, we did budget for this as part of the fiscal fourteen, fifteen year, so you can provide direction if you're wishing to use that retroactively or not.
Oh, I thought I just asked you that, and you said no.
That's why I'm not-
I'm sorry, I did, I-
If it's part of the M O U and all of this negotiation, why would we go retro?
Well, a good portion of the reason we are proposing to adopt this policy is not necessarily for the represented employees, or the large number of management employees that I'm relying upon all the time to get back to me, you know, nighttime, weekends, et cetera, that we've, we've been relying upon for years without reimbursing them for their phones. And I think that's, that's really the headline that I want to get out there, is that there's a big chunk of people that we just assume it's okay that they buy a phone and pay for the plan, and then we, we ask them to use it, but we don't, we don't reimburse them for that. And it's not just management employees, but that, that's probably, those people that are asked to be on their phone the most are probably management employees.
Counselor, would you please?
I will make a motion to adopt the mobile device usage and reimbursement policy for appropriate business use of mobile devices to include payments retroactive to the beginning of this fiscal year.
Second.
Joe?
Been moved in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Been moved in second, is there additional comments? Public?
Do, do we, do we have an accurate number on the retroactive number?
Half price.
Half price?
Yeah.
It'd be half of that?
Half of that, because we're halfway through.
No, it's not quite that. It's not quite, right?
It's not quite what?
The cost of the retroactive.
Well, instead of starting it in January, we'll be going back to the fiscal year of July first.
Except for the people that are recovering the M O Us.
Right, so not, so probably a quarter of that, sort of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
You can live with it.
Comment? Call for the vote? All eyes? Item number eleven.
Yes, Mayor, item number eleven. This is an item of discussion and action for the council wherein we determine what we're going to do with the repair or reconstruction of our fuel dock. Attached to this staff report, there's a white paper, if you will, that was previously distributed to the council wherein we talk about the status of, of the fuel dock, the grant monies that we have secured to do reconstruction, and some remedies, either short-term or, or long-term. And the question before you this evening is, do, do you wish to, well, let me take a step back. As you probably well know, the fuel dock is not in great shape, and so through professional, but not certified engineer observation, we have determined that as, as a city, we don't feel comfortable keeping the fuel dock and, and the Casino Dock Cafe, the tenant that we have there, open for, for business without an opinion from a certified engineer as to the safety of that structure and/or a determination of requisite repairs. So before you, this evening, we have a request for your guidance, and, and the request is this. If you decide that you would like to have an engineer take a look at this facility and, and issue an opinion as to whether it's safe and, and what the requisite repairs may be, we, we anticipate that that study would probably cost in the neighborhood of around ten thousand dollars, maybe a little bit less. Now, that, that study could come back to you with then a, an estimated repair price tag, or it might come back to you with a recommendation that you can't actually repair, you just need to proceed in reconstruction because it's no longer at that point where you can, can do that any longer. So it's a, it's a big consideration for you to weigh. The city currently derives about fifty-eight thousand dollars annually from our tenant, the Casino Dock Cafe, it's Russ and Jenny Armstrong, they're, they're here with us this evening. We have been in discussions with, with Russ and Jenny, we've been very upfront about the, the status of the facility and the potential next steps. In fact, they received the white paper as well, we went through it with them. I know that they both have come to me and to Mr. Jayage wanting to, to speak on this item this evening, so I would request that you give them that opportunity, of course. And if, if I can answer questions about any of this, or Dennis can, we'd both be, be happy to do so.
Would you like to speak first?
Good evening, Russ and Jenny Armstrong, eighteen seventy-three Caviota. Like Ben said, we've had several discussions, meetings about Casino Dock Cafe.
Excuse me, Russ, if you would talk just a little better in the mic for Dudley. Thank you.
Meeting about a week and a half ago, when Ben showed us the paperwork and the information that we had in front of us, Jenny and I talked it over, and we thought that if you would like to go ahead and have this study done, to quote Ben, "Look under the hood," for eight to ten thousand dollars. It's not going to buy us anything other than a looksee and a determination as to whether it's repairable temporarily or not. And Jenny and I gave it some thought, some consideration, and we thought what we would like to do is to show good faith, goodwill with our landlord, that we would split that cost of the look, and see where it goes from there. If the repair, we think that if the repair is some reasonable amount of money to do it for one season, I think the city should go ahead with it. If it's determined that it's, the repair is thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, probably wouldn't be advisable to go with, go with it at that time, and then we should probably proceed for the bigger picture of Casino Dock Cafe. And I think that, you know, if those repairs, you know, Ben and I had a little discussion about it today, if we can, you know, have the professionals look at it, determine what needs to be done, if the city can do the work, you know, we might be able to get it done for a reasonable amount. And the figure that I think, if we can have it done for maybe twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, it would probably behoove the city- dollars, um, it would probably behoove the city to let us operate for one more summer. Because we think that between April, if we can open in April and just through September, we wouldn't wanna operate any longer than the end of September because we feel that come fall, we would need to get started, you know, ASAP on, on the teardown, new facility and whatnot. But I think we could probably generate just between April and September in the vicinity of about forty-five thousand dollars in revenue to the city. And then you, of course, have to deduct the cost of the repairs from that. So that is essentially where we are right now. Would like to say one other thing. We received a letter from the city, uh, back in October, it was, uh, October twenty-second, actually. And, and in the letter states that, uh, a number of things, but it also says in the near future, you'll be receiving your revised leases. This was a form letter went out to all your tenants. Uh, and we have not received that yet. And we're curious as to the status.
And I could answer that question. We, we deliberately excluded, uh, the Casino Dock Cafe, knowing that we were going to have this discussion item coming before the council in January. We didn't think it was prudent to give you a revised lease document until we knew what the decision would be from the council.
Well, I think, you know, the, um, you know, goodwill, you know, it's always a, it's a two-way street. It's not a one-way street. So it has to work both ways. And we are particularly sensitive to operating a business without a lease. We've had some very unfortunate circum- circumstances occur as to operating without a lease. And we fully understand that if repairs can be made temporarily, great, we'll operate, we can all make a little money. And if it can't be done, it behooves us to shut down for safety reasons. We're totally on board with that.
Sure. And if I could just clarify, it was really our intent just to not have the, the lease amount increase pursuant to the, or change pursuant to the direction until we really knew what you guys wanted to do with that. It certainly, it's, it's certainly not, uh, the city's, um, it's, it's certainly not our intent to, of course, remove the Casino Dock Cafe or any nefarious action like that. We just didn't think it was appropriate to enter into a new covenant until we really knew what the direction was gonna be.
Well, if we could, at, at some point in the not-too-distant future, if we could perhaps, um, have a letter from the city, uh, with a letter, a letter of intent as having the Armstrongs as the tenants for Casino Dock Cafe, we would certainly appreciate that. And, and I think you should, and I'm sure you are, appreciate the fact that we're hypersensitive about operating without a lease for, for what we think are good reasons.
Appreciate that, yeah. We, we, based upon what happened this evening, we would certainly wanna memorialize the decision and, and we would certainly execute a, a letter and/or a covenant if it was appropriate to record that.
Well, we appreciate that, Ben. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I, I guess now, I might see Jen, Dennis up here.
No, I would like to see Don.
Cause I just have some questions, kind of in, in, um, in consideration of what Russ was talking about. So let's assume we, we say, okay, we're gonna do the eight to ten thousand dollar jail, they're gonna split it with us, everything's great. Walk us through a timeline of, of, let's say, we say, okay, tomorrow, we're gonna have this done. Walk us through a realistic timeline of, okay, somebody would come and do this report and we would get this report back. Then, based on your professional opinion, if I can say this, if this is not putting you on the spot, do we feel at all like an attempt, like a temporary fix would only be between thirty and fifty K to keep it safe for another season? Is that realistic in your mind?
It's not known. Uh, structural engineer has to get under there. Um, not a civil. Uh, it's, it's, uh, suffered pretty good, uh, damage through the last marine, especially in this last storm. So it's not known. Uh, a structural engineer will have to put his name on it and say it's okay for X amount of people to be out on the patio. We had this done before by Harvard Department, I believe, did it. And we were limited to the people we could put on it. Harvard Department performed a lot of repairs, uh, spent a lot of money on it. So I can't give you a dollar value on how much it would cost, nor can I tell you if it can be repaired, not until the structural engineer gets, takes a look at it. As far as the timeline goes, it, uh, it's premature to say. The California Coastal Commission has the permit, has the plans for the new construction. I mean, they, they could, uh, in essence, give us the approval to start the new construction in March. Uh, we anticipate that it's gonna be a month or two after that.
To start?
Yes, if they approve the permit. So it's, there's a lot of hypotheticals that we have to consider. Um, I wish I could tell you how much a repair's gonna cost. I just can't. Uh, we would hope it'd be minor, but it does not look good under there. I'll tell you that. Doesn't look good at all.
When you said the Harvard Department had done repairs in the past, do you anticipate that the repairs in the future would be something our Harvard Department could do? I mean, can they put in pipelines and can they put in?
No, uh, they're, they're limited to what they can do. And unfortunately, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I don't think that this is something Harvard Department's gonna be able to repair. I think, I think it could be more serious.
Structural, a structural engineer's, um, assessment would be less than ten thousand dollars?
Not to exceed ten thousand. We got a quote.
We did?
Yes. We got a quote.
It may be less.
Pardon me?
It may be less.
Yeah, uh, but not much.
Not much.
Yeah. Uh, the, not to exceed ten thousand dollars is putting a diver under there. Uh, but I can tell you, as we speak, there's several piers that are not fastened to the substrate, to the ocean floor. Several piers.
How long, do we have any idea how long the construction would take of, of the plans that we have right now?
Yeah, between six to eight months.
Six to eight months?
Yes. Probably on the six. We're gonna, uh, we're talking internally, but we're thinking to give the contractor a hundred and eighty calendar days to do the project, depending upon, um, what timeframe the, uh, coastal commission permit comes back. Uh, we have a, uh, grant that's, uh, uh, pretty, uh, pretty nice, but it has an expiration date and we're all trying to make that. So we're on, uh, coastal commission to, uh, approve these as quick as we can.
So it's six to eight months and then, um, the Armstrongs have, have, um, have to construct their facility on, um, the dock as well after that point that, that we get done with our work, correct? Or, or we're, we're in partnership with them?
We are, uh, building the structure, the shell.
Yeah, if I could just clarify on that one, we, we would have to come back to you with some type of proposed development agreement for, for that type of partnership. So we're solely just speaking here of just the, the substructure pier itself. We would come back to you at a later date with a proposal for you to entertain for tenant improvement on the top.
Who's, who's the, um, the engineer that's, that, that we got a quote from?
Blue Water Design Group. They're the engineers of record on the, uh, the second engineer of record on the, uh, the pier itself. They've, uh, got a quote from a diving, a structural, uh, diving firm to go under there and do the calculations and take pictures and write a report, a condition assessment. It's tough. It's a tough decision. Um, it, like I said, it's a lot of hypotheticals and only time will tell what's, uh, the ramifications are gonna be.
Well, it's something we have to do. Um, we're gonna have to do it now, now or later. And, um-
What, the, the repair or the project?
The, the project. I mean, the, the, the project needs to be done. I mean, it's, I mean, I'm not gonna, we just had two major storms. Um, that's, and that's after, um, the assess, the last assessment was already done. So it's not like it's gonna be in better condition after we had a hurricane and, um, several hurricanes and a nor'easter. I mean, but-
Pretty, pretty poor.
With that said, it's, I'd, I'd like to just inject it, it, the state of the economy is, is probably up to you guys, Jenny and Russ, as to how you feel about, uh, the economy. I mean, because you, you could, it seems to me that you, you, you're gonna have to maybe, you might have a lapse of one season, possibly, either, either maybe this year or next year. And if the economy's better next year and you, and you, you miss that year as opposed to this year, you might be, um, out more money. And the same with us and our, and the tax revenue that's generated for us as well. So, I mean, that's a matter, that's something to think about as well. Because if, um, from my point of view, I've, whatever we need to do to accom- to accommodate what, um, okay, yes, sir, please do.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point you made, Joe. The, um, ideally, it would be best for all parties if we could do this, have it done at some point without missing a season. And that's why we would like to, to try to, you know, get this season in if it's deemed repairs can be made and the repairs would not be excessively expensive. And if they are, then all bets are off and we don't do it. But, you know, we're willing to invest some money along with the city to determine whether it can be functional this season or not, get the season in. As a business person in Avalon, for obvious reasons, you know, we don't like to miss one season.
Right. I don't wanna see you guys miss a season either.
Yeah, and that'll, and that'll, I think, solely be determined by what's found under the building and the cost of it, the cost of the repair, if there will be a repair. And they may, they may discover that, no, you're just putting good money into bad money and it would make no sense and then we'll have no, absolutely no choice.
Correct. And I'm anticipating, um, seeing your new facility and being out there and patronizing it, um, if, if, if I had my way about it. So-
Well, thanks, Joe.
I just, I just wanna let you know that, um, it's gonna, it's gonna be great.
I appreciate that.
And we, and it's gonna be well needed as well.
Thank you, Joe.
So I'm really looking forward to it. Um, whatever decision we make, I'm sure it will be the, in the best interest of, of the Armstrongs and, and all that you've done for our community over, you know, the last forty years and, um, the city of Avalon and what we have to offer our guests. So, um-
Thanks, Joe. Certainly appreciate that.
And I as well.
It is, it is a partnership. It's something that, you know, we all have to work together on. Any else? Thank you.
So it sounds like-
Other council members have comments?
Dennis, um, just a question about the grant, the expiration date on it. Is it, is there, um, when is the expiration date on that?
Uh, March two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen.
Uh, the end of March, I believe.
And there's, do they have a policy where we can extend it or is there anything like that?
Yeah, they do. And so procedurally, two thousand, March of two thousand sixteen was as far out as they would allow us right now. However, if we're in the midst of it, we're demonstrating progress and they have given us-
Good faith, we're doing stuff, we can possibly ask for an extension?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Possibly, if we're doing some work to it, showing a good faith. So it sounds like we're just at the hands of the structural engineer, uh, to me. And what, what he, what he says is gonna be what's gonna happen. And how long does that take him to get here? Say we approve that today, is it possible to get him here next week, tomorrow?
Yes. Um, um, last I heard, I spoke to them on Tuesday. I think, uh, they can mobilize in, in seven man-days, so it would be, uh, next week, probably, Thursday.
And any idea how long a report would take? Do you have, depending on what they find?
Another, another week for the report.
Okay. So possibly in two weeks, we could have an answer. Poss-
Close to three, probably.
So three weeks?
Yeah, to be conservative.
To give us an answer.
Yeah. So, and then again, you know, who knows? A, a closer commission could be approving. I don't, we don't anticipate it for sixty to ninety days, but they could be. We just don't know.
Okay.
My comments are, uh, thank you, Dennis, for all of the input. Um, thanks to Jenny and Russ for such a generous offer. It's very much appreciated and it certainly does go out to show a partnership with the city in, uh, being a tenant and landlord. Um, I certainly am in favor of at least going out, certainly with the help of the Armstrongs to go out and see what it would take for us to be able to let them be open for the, for this season. Um, in thinking a little bit more about it, even if, from my perspective, even if we were in a break even to get through this season, to me, that's far better than having a very prime facility closed. Um, if we really think about it, that's where, um, at the very least, a third of our boaters use the, um, dinghy docks out there to load and unload. And I just think it would be more detrimental to the community to not have it open than open. So, um, I realize that if we, once we do this study, any, their determination of repairs and, uh, our decision of whether we're gonna go forward with repairs, how much that would cost, that would certainly come back to the council. But, um, I absolutely fully support moving forward to determine whether we can keep you open for another year.
Appreciate that, Cindy.
Was that a motion?
Oh, okay. So with that, if there's no other council comments, I would make a motion to approve that the city council, uh, engage and authorize funding for an engineering study to determine the viability of short-term repairs to the fuel dock.
Second.
Other comment?
Counsel?
I got another comment.
Yeah, go. Depending on the determination that we have, you know, we could miss, I'm just gonna let it be known, we could miss, we could miss a season. So we're gonna have to work hard and, and, and we'll work hard, as hard as we can. I think, I think we're all determined to get our job done. And then we're gonna have to partner up and pony up to go ahead and, um, get the other aspect of this going so that we can be open for the twenty sixteen season, okay? So just letting you know, there's a possibility that, you know, you guys know, I don't need to lecture you on any of this, but just, just a heads up, man, we, we're gonna have to work hard to get this done so you guys can open in twenty sixteen. But I'm just-
We gotta work, full over all the ramifications. Could go back and say, don't forget it.
Beautiful. Okay. Excellent.
Thank you, Joe.
You as well.
Is anybody else? Just a, just a question, cause you say that it's not funded on our part in the budget. Correct? But-
It's not.
Within, it says, within fiscal fourteen, fifteen, we budget a hundred and fifty for design and engineering costs. Um, does it kinda come out of that?
No.
No?
But we, I can tell you, on the operations side of the budget, we, we, there is a surplus. We, we can, we can make an amendment to the budget to cover this.
Okay. You mean it is a-
Yes. You, you can afford this.
Okay. Other comments? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
No, we could. Uh, the next item is closed session, but we would like to do is, um, pass on through to the housing authority.
We're gonna take a recess of the, uh, we're gonna take a recess of the council meeting and go into the housing authority.
Okay. Oh, I thought you said recess. Got it.
No.
Okay. All righty.
If you want to, you can.
So we'd like to call, to order the housing authority of the city of Avalon, uh, January twentieth. Denise, vocal?
Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
And Chairman Marshall?
Here. Announcements?
None.
Written communications?
None.
Oral communications. Community may, has three minutes to speak. Okay. Hearing none. Consent calendar?
Yes, there is one item on the consent calendar. It is the actions from the December second housing authority meeting.
Okay. Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve the housing authority of the city of Avalon Board of Commissioners' actions from the December second, two thousand fourteen meeting.
A second.
Other comment? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
All ayes.
Hey, general business?
Yes, there are two items on general business this evening, and I need to point out, I think that we put them in your packet out of order. Item number two is actually number three, and item number three is actually number two. So if you look at the one that says Agenda Item Number Three, this is the one titled Avalon Housing Workshop: Use of Housing Authority Funds. Do you guys all have that in front of you? We apologize for the confusion. So, seems to be a theme this evening with getting our...I didn't catch it, so I'm sorry. Anyway, Elizabeth Hall, who you well know from the city attorney's offices here this evening, she's been waiting patiently, she is going to interject and help me walk through this item because she is the expert, I'm certainly not, but the point of this discussion this evening is to talk about the money that you have in the housing authority and what you might decide to do with that. That's this particular item, okay? I think the easiest way to go through this would be to go to page two of your staff report, wherein there's a table where we talk about different projects or programs that you could enter into with your housing authority funds. And we've ranked them from a value of high down to low on the return on investment. And so in other words, this is the bang for the buck that you would receive potentially. And in our opinion, you're gonna receive the most bang for your buck by doing a multifamily new construction project, large or multi-unit apartment building and so forth. Going down from that, oh, and we would establish that at a high value. Going down from that, you could do rental rehab. We've talked about that in town, purchasing a property and rehabilitating it for use. That would give you what we deem a medium value on your investment. Next, we go to infrastructure. Your housing authority funds could also be used to do infrastructure improvement, such as replacing private sewer laterals to low-income properties, and that would fit in with the city's cease and desist order and a need to address our infrastructure needs. That, again, we deem a medium return on your investment. Going then, we go to the options that we deem to be a low return on your investment. Doesn't mean that they're not a worthy cause, but, you know, these are one-time monies that are not being replenished any longer, so once they're gone, they're gone. Those would include rental assistance, single-family projects, and then low and moderate income down payment assistance programs. Those are, you know, like I said, certainly ways to help out folks, but you don't leave those arrangements with an asset in hand, so to speak. So we're basically talking about bond proceeds, about 4.3 million that you have at your disposal. You had asked us to give you some suggestions on how to spend those bond proceeds, and so these are our top suggestions for what you might do with that money. And Elizabeth, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to interject there?
No, we've talked sort of through these a number of times, the options, so it's really, we're just looking for direction from you. You have about $5,035,000 in sort of cash on hand. Most of that is in your bond proceeds, and then we have a little bit in a couple other sources. And so we just need some direction on how you want to spend that. We could, as we've discussed in the past, we could do a notice of funding availability and put it out just to all housing providers. I have a list that I can give you if you're interested. A 9% tax credit deal that just went out to bid over in town had 32 respondents who were interested in proposing on the project. I don't know that we've ever done anything like that over here. I'm not sure we would get that kind of response here on the island, but it's certainly something for you to consider.
The only thing I might add to that, as you probably well know, two factors that do make it unique over here on the island, of course, are land and water. Anybody who did respond to something like that wouldn't have to have the ability to secure some land and to secure a water allocation. So those are two additional factors here that you want to weigh as you make a decision.
Well, and...can we ask the island company if they would entertain anybody else, or is that, just to see if that's an option or not? I mean, sorry, Mike, but we gotta look at all our options here, right?
Yeah, I guess to that question, we have spoken to the island company. They did acknowledge that they do have an agreement with Mr. Flynn for this project, and they're on board with that. However, they did indicate that there are no legal terms in there that make it necessarily exclusive. That doesn't mean that they don't want to honor that agreement, of course.
That was clear. Thank you.
I can't speak on behalf of them.
Is there water for this project?
There is a water allocation for this project. However, since we are in Phase Two, I believe that you can't exercise that until you're out of Phase Two.
Mr. Harvey, just when we say this project, we're talking Mr. Flynn's project?
I'm sorry, you know what? The point of clarification, absolutely. That's the next item we're getting to, but there is a...right, for the Hamilton Pacific proposal, to answer that question, yes, there is a water allocation here.
So if someone new were to come onto the island, we would have to deal with the water issue?
We don't even have enough water for the people that are here now. I don't know, I don't mean to be cynical about this, but I'm just trying to figure out, where's the water? Where's it gonna come from? I mean, I know it's gonna come from the sky, but it's like, there's not enough now. We're in a...you know? So I just want to stress that point. You know, I guess I'm calling out Edison to figure out how to get us some more water here, you know? That's what I'm doing, is, you know, let's reboot the desalination plant, let's dredge the reservoir out there, let's do what we have to do, the things that are at our fingertips right now that we can do. Then we can talk seriously, really seriously, about more housing. Let's talk about our infrastructure. Let's talk about our sewer lines and our cease and desist order. Those are things that we need to take precedence and be a prerequisite to building and more housing and growth. That's what I want to hear. I want to hear who's gonna help us out with that kind of thing. I mean, I think we need everybody to take a big time out here and figure out those things first. That's what my constituents are asking me to do, is to say, hey, timeout. Where's the water? How come our sewer plant is operating at 90%, 95% capacity summertime? It's my uneducated and informal knowledge that our sewer treatment plan has fallen apart, and we need to reboot that as well. So these are things that I want, I want those questions answered before, and I know there's probably a certain amount of time, what, do we have to spend this money in, Elizabeth?
There are general guidelines for spending it. There's certainly no urgency. We don't need to make a decision today. It was a priority that this council had raised and asked us to come back, as we did in November, December, and then you asked us to return in January with more information for you. So that's what we're doing. If you wanted to put this decision off for six months, you could certainly do that.
What's the chance of us rebuilding the housing that we already have, remodeling all that? I mean, is that part of this whole thing? We do have, how many houses, we have, what, how many properties?
You have five properties listed, you have five properties. Some of them already have units in affordable restrictions on them. We do have the East Whitley property, which is eligible for sale or doing a project on there. That's another opportunity. You could put out a request for proposals for a developer to come in and give you a proposal on what they would do with that site. They could tear it down, they could rehab it, they could, you know, come over, take a look at it. You may have to, again, use some of your cash that you have to assist in that, but then it would be affordable housing for 55 years.
Yeah, I think we absolutely should go out there and stretch our arms out and, you know, open up the floodgates for requests for proposals from different developers or different contractors. That's my own personal opinion, and that's also the opinion of many of my constituents as well, along with Mike Flynn, I mean, because Hamilton Pacific, they've built some great, you know, they've done some good things for our community, and will probably continue to do so, but at the same time, we need to call to order that there's other people out there that might have some better offers for us out there as well. Of course, we don't have the property, we don't have the property to do a plan as big as 48 units, but we have our own properties that we can work with right here, and we can actually provide some housing for sale here, which I don't believe any of the housing on the Hamilton Pacific project is gonna be for sale, correct? It's all gonna be rental properties?
It's a 48-unit rental.
Yeah, okay.
As proposed currently.
And we do need rentals, and we do need more housing for our community, but there's also a lot of people that, you know, that might be interested in purchasing housing as well. So I'm just raising as many questions as I possibly can right now so that we can bring to bear all the assets and all the knowledge that we can and invite it in.
And I can't represent that you would get responses like we got in town if we were to put out a request. We just, I don't know, because we haven't done that, to my knowledge, on the island ever.
Has it never been done?
Not that I know of.
We need to get on that.
They're paired with a lot more history than I have about the island and what you guys have done, but in the five years or so that I've been working with you and looking at the files that I've seen, I'm not aware of it being done, so we just wanted to make sure you knew it was an opportunity for you. I can't guarantee you will have this kind of success, but I can't tell you that we won't. I just don't know. We have talked to some affordable housing developers. You know, we've earmarked currently 3.8 million for Mr. Flynn's project. You have another million or so, so there's some other money and there's other properties out there. So we did talk to other developers on, in town to see if they would be interested in coming over, and we have gotten positive feedback, but that was just sort of speculative, hey, if there were funds, if there was some land, would you guys maybe be willing to come over and do a project on the island? And nobody said no.
Nobody said no. And I'm thinking, if we're talking about spending $6 million of the taxpayers' money, then maybe we should reach out to all the assets that we possibly, all the different mediums we possibly can to find out what our best, our best deal would be for the people who own this money. Anyway, that's all I have to inject for right now.
Ollie?
Yes.
What are you thinking?
I agree with some of the stuff that Councilman Sampson says. I'm not sure why the agenda's the way the agenda is.
What do you mean?
I think the first item on the, whatever number it is, it was an extension of an agreement for six weeks or something like that, seven weeks. I think, once we get that done and we get the decision on that project, that takes the biggest chunk, assuming it works, it takes the largest chunk of money out of this bucket. And I think we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit here, personally, and I'd...
So what I might add is, if, not to interrupt you, Mayor Protem, but I think you would, your decision would be to spend the proceeds on multifamily, that'd be the direction from this workshop item would be, to dedicate it towards some type of use like that.
Okay. I can concur with that, thank you.
Okay, so, okay, just back me up a bit. So you said that there is water, and I'm sorry, because these have gotta be mixed together. There is water for these 48 units?
Yeah, Hamilton Pacific did receive a water allocation for the project, however, since we are now in Phase Two.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So more the reason for tariffs, but, okay, so, and he's only asking basically 3.8 of the 5.8?
Right, so you'd have about $1 million if you funded Mr. Flynn's project fully, which is part of the reason it's sort of presented the way it is, because we wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to have sort of the broader policy discussion before you decided whether or not to continue that dedication of the 3.8 million. So if you choose you want to do a multifamily project, if you think that's really the policy direction you want to focus on, then you have the choice of going with Mr. Flynn's project, not extending his, doing a NOFA, doing some combination thereof. That's the direction we're looking for.
Well, I would really be, okay, let's look at, I know you can't speak for the island company, but if, and Mike, if you ever want to chime in. So what would, because I'm not a developer, what would be the reason that the island company might say, yeah, we've got a great run with Mike, but on this one, we want to go with somebody else? What are the enhancements that somebody that is a landowner would want to change with who they've been working with? Because I don't know, because I'm sure there's tax credits and there's all this stuff that I don't know about. What could somebody offer that somebody else doesn't offer so that somebody else looks like they have a sweeter deal than what Mike is offering the island company?
So that's, those are private business deals, and I'm not familiar with the nature of Mr. Flynn's business deal, nor do I know for sure what any of these developers could negotiate. Some of these are nonprofits, some of them are for-profit developers, so there may be tax issues, other things that they can negotiate that I'm not really in a position to speak to. But that would certainly be something between Mr. Flynn or one of the other potential developers and the island company.
Right, right.
Again, not to say that they could necessarily work out a deal with the island company, that's, you know, they have their deal with Mr. Flynn, and I think they're satisfied with it.
And the extension for the six weeks, is we need some more information from Mr. Flynn?
Yes, we do. And again, the current agreement with Mr. Flynn is an exclusive negotiated agreement, which basically says the $3.8 million is set aside for his project while we work with him in seeing if we can come to a conclusion on a development agreement, which would be an agreement between the city and Hamilton, actually saying, okay, we're going to set aside this money and we're gonna actually help you build it. We still need information for this project because, as Councilmember Sampson said, one of the biggest issues is infrastructure, and this project has an infrastructure assumption of $600,000 for total infrastructure, which would be sewer, water, fire. And so we've asked Mr. Flynn to provide us more detailed information on where those figures are from. We're also, at the same time, having Mr. Zage look at that to determine if that is a realistic assumption for 600,000, because obviously if we need more infrastructure for this project, then the numbers may not work out, and it's also what infrastructure is needed. Is it just infrastructure on the site, or if you're adding 48 units, are there downstream improvements that you need to be able to handle the effluent that would be coming down from that? And so these are things that we still need to evaluate before staff would recommend that you enter into an agreement with Hamilton Pacific. And so the extending the ENA would allow, would give us until the end of March right now to further refine the information and then come back to you as to, we want to go forward with this, or the numbers don't pencil out, and ultimately, the decision is your decision.
The numbers don't pencil out. It's evident to me that we need millions of dollars worth of infrastructure downstream from this project. My hat's off to Mr. Flynn for providing us with some information about the infrastructure that they're gonna do, but that's obviously just for the project that they're doing. The whole entire Front Street needs to be dug up, and that main line that takes the sewer out to the treatment plant needs to be redone down there, according to the gentleman who run the sewer treatment plant. That's what we need to do. I mean, we obviously need housing, of course we do. So if, let's just say, we put out a request for proposal and we don't give the extension on this, we could still give, we could, at a later time, we can still renegotiate with Mr. Flynn as well, right? Correct?
He could certainly respond to the request for proposal, of course, and you could ultimately decide to select him from that.
Right, okay.
And one thing I would say is, whoever proposes, if you decide to go out, whoever proposes is still gonna have the same infrastructure issues, but they may have a different type of proposal. You don't know what you're gonna get when you send this out. You know, you say, you say, you know... You know, you say, you say, you know.
Still going to have the same issues.
You're still going to have the same basic issues, but you don't know the product that people may propose.
I just don't think we're doing justice to the people who are already here and that already own homes and properties here by putting in more properties that we just cannot provide infrastructure for. That's all. We've just got to take care of what we already have on the table before we start adding more on top of it. You know, we have something to work with. This is all good. We're trying to make a good thing better right here. That's what we're doing. And we've just got to do it in the right, in the right order.
Before I ask any more questions, Cynthia Rich, do you have any comment?
Well, I think we've kind of muddied both of these items together, which is made it a little more confusing. I understand why, why we discussed the first one in order that we have and we've kind of moved on to this one. So I'm a little unclear as to how properly to respond. I think we need housing for sure, but I also agree that we currently don't have an infrastructure that can handle additional housing today. So in a perfect world, let's do them both at the same time. I don't think we have enough money to do all that. So I guess I, I would like to maintain funds available to help with the replacement of infrastructure. I agree that that's a little bit more of a priority than constructing new housing. I don't know, I really don't know how to justify that and I don't have a fair way of justifying that, but I want to maintain some money if in fact we can use some of that housing money for that. I'd like to.
Which you could, you could, you could take a balance of that and use that for things like, like we were talking about, private sewer lateral replacements to low-income housing. We've got a number of properties in town that we could, where we could do that.
But that's not our infrastructure.
It's not, but it does, it does feed into our infrastructure and one of the main challenges that we have with the CDO is that we've already replaced the main lines for the most part, but part of our problem is the pipes that feed into those main lines.
I don't think that addresses Councilmember Sampson's issues about our crumbling infrastructure.
It doesn't, you're, you're right.
But these funds, the extent that these funds can be used for infrastructure, it has to be tied specifically to a low-income development, and so that's where we can, through the lateral connections.
When you do the lateral, you could replace the sewer that serves Nutrimont.
I'm sorry?
The sewer line that exclusively serves Nutrimont or something, you could, or something, but anytime it starts to serve mixed companies, we'll get.
It gets more complicated.
Yeah. So it comes with the territory.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm just thinking it has to come with the territory with the project.
Right.
Maybe a, maybe a request for proposal would, might answer some of these questions, because Mr. Flynn, he's welcome to keep, put in, you know, his two cents in, in here and, and then some. When the time comes, we can better assess this if we understand more what people are offering us. We have, we can either go with one company here, Hamilton Pacific, or we can branch out a little bit and see what else is out there that we could possibly, well, there might be a remedy out there for us, is what I'm saying. If we put a request for a proposal out there, maybe a company will come in and have a remedy for us. Maybe they'll have more money to work with and they'll put the money down for the infrastructure. Say, hey, here's City of Avalon, you use us and we'll, we'll put the money up for your infrastructural problems. In the meantime, maybe Edison will help us out and expand, are there water allocations for, for the island? Not by drilling a deep water well either, that's exclusive mainly for one company, and we need water for the entire island, and we don't want to pick favorites here. This is for everybody. And a desalination plant is going to help us out there. So we got to put, we have, have to have broad-reaching arms here to figure out exactly what the remedy is going to be. And, you know, I, I think a request for proposal is a great idea.
I have a question. So the bond proceeds are what would go to Mr. Flynn?
You have not allocated specific funds, you've just allocated three point eight million of the roughly five million dollars we have on hand. So I would assume that it would come from the bond proceeds, because that's where we have four point three million dollars, so it makes the most sense, but if you wanted to use another one of the sources, you could do that.
So my question is, I understood, seemed like before, that the money was going to be for low, low-income housing, correct? But I also understand that that bond money is also available for low or moderate income projects.
If we exclusively use bond money, it's low and moderate income housing. If you mix in other funds, it becomes more restricted. So it depends on your funding source.
So if we're not looking for a bunch, if we're not really wanting to finish low, low-income housing, that's the push, but for some reason, there's an attraction to the low, low-income in what Mr. Flynn wants to do, correct?
To score well on the tax credits. Mike, you may be able to speak to this better, but there are advantages in how you distribute the units to your scoring to get the tax credits. And so it makes more funding available with different unit mixes, more restricted unit mixes.
So could we discuss the possibility of a better mixture of those housing units with Mr. Flynn? I mean, so that, so maybe we could do some moderate.
That could be part of the negotiation, yes. That may not be acceptable to him depending on how it impacts the tax credits, but that's something that if the council were to give us direction to continue negotiating for another six weeks, that we could, or six weeks or, you know, yes, we, again, we can continue to negotiate this.
I mean, that might be something I might want to look at, have a look at, but the other thing is, we still don't know, we haven't, I don't think we've written a letter yet to the people that own Tremont about what their plans are to do with that property when it, when its fifty years expires. And to me, that's important, because if they're not going to accept Section Eight anymore, then we may need a home for low income, but, but if they're going to stay and still have some, you know what I know, you know what I'm trying to say. Because we need a blend, we, I mean, we need a blend.
I'd forgotten we talked about doing that too.
Okay.
Further information.
I don't have a problem with, you know, what, six weeks? You know?
Forty-two days.
I mean, I don't have a.
You want, you want to hold it over?
Hold it over for forty-two days?
No.
Okay, let's continue to talk about that. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, I, we've muddied two items here, so before we move into really discussing Agenda Item Two, shouldn't we introduce that and should we move on from, or Item Number Three or?
We can hold, we can hold Item Number Two while we open Item Number Three and allow Mr. Flynn to explain and give us more information that the council may, that the authority may need to extend this contract.
Thank you, Scott. Mike Flynn, Hamilton Pacific. If we kind of, we're at this point, the last hearing, it's a very complicated situation, and so I heard some suggestions tonight that I think are good ones, and I would encourage you to do all of them. I would say, number one is, you need a workshop to understand exactly what's out there, what it means, what kind of returns can come back. I mean, Annie, I think the idea of what's going on with Tremont, why would you do a multifamily housing project versus something else and look at the returns that are there? And then you have some basis to do this. To jump into this, as complicated as it is, kind of partway, you're not going to get those answers. You really need to think about it and go through this. We've been doing this for three years now, so. Saying that, you do have to have water, and Joe's exactly right with water, and it's either one of two ways. I applied for the, for a water allocation a couple of years back when we were not in Phase Two. It is not good now because we're in Phase Two. So obviously, in order to have a project move forward, you've got to have that resolved. So again, working with you guys, we're working on the, with the D-SO, we're working on, on bulkhead issues, we've talked about it endlessly. So we understand that it's not just this project, it's really all of Avalon that we're trying to address the issues for. So I think along with this whole process, Joe, I mean, getting involved and being active with that water and understanding what it means and what it doesn't mean, we've got a proposal into Ben and to Dennis to review and look at, and hopefully over this next week, we'll work on that. The biggest thing is, I think, when you look at all of the issues, you get some benefit. But I think the toughest thing to realize is that when it's all said and done, you have forty-eight units, you can only put just over a little bit of a million dollars in debt on it, and it's a seventeen million dollar project. So yes, you're putting in thirteen point eight million dollars, but it's being matched by a substantial amount of more money. And because of that, because of its designation, it doesn't have a cash flow. The, the play with this is, over multi-multi-years to ever get your return back, the nine percent tax exempt holder is the one that actually gets the benefit, that's why they make that investment. Along with that, they, as they talked about, the contest that you have to go through in order to be able to score correctly and to achieve a perfect score, but part of that is also looked at as who's built on the island of any magnitude such as this. There's not a lot of us. You know, we've gone through some bad times, we've made some mistakes, and we've, you know, learned from those hopefully, and we've gotten better and better and better over the last ten, twelve years for what we're doing, but that all gets interplayed into all of that. So it's, you may have a financial partner that may come over, you all know that there's not anybody of any development status that can come in and pull this off that really, literally, really, other than us. We've been doing that. It's not that they can't all team up together, but we have the equipment and everything else. That's why we got involved. So I'm happy to work with you, but this is not me trying to convince you guys of anything. I was around when we lost seven million dollars through, through TOT taxes, it just evaporated one day. So this is monies that is really not to be placed in a savings account, it's monies to be utilized for housing. And so what we looked at is, what do you get the biggest bang for your buck for? And here you get forty-eight units for three point eight million dollars plus matching funds. And in the past, we've spent that same amount of money and got five units. So that's not a good, that's not a good prudent use of your, of your money. If you guys don't want us to do it, we, it's okay, but we've been spending thousands of dollars over the last year, and just either stop the bleed or let's rope our sleeves and try to figure this thing out, is all I have to say.
And City Manager, how do we get off the dime on this one?
Well, I think kind of what the city attorney was saying, we could make a decision on, on the Item Number Three, the exclusive negotiation agreement, you could decide to extend that or not, and that would probably, you know, indicate your priority for using funds. Or you could go back to the first item and have a discussion about what you think is the best use of your, your money.
Regardless, even if you decided to commit for the six, six weeks, doesn't mean that at the end of that, you're still going forward with the deal, and even if you did spend three point eight, you still have a million dollars for other projects. So council still needs to give us direction on how you want to spend the other money, and then those are the cash assets, and remember, you still have actual properties, including the Whitley property, which has been for sale for a year now.
Well, I don't know if this is the place that we could, we talk about. Just, how do we have a handle on what our unmet housing needs are? How do, do we know that we really, in this city, the way we are and whatever, that we really are minus so many middle-income places or moderate income or low-low? How do we know how we, how is that determined? What's lacking in our housing market besides a field?
Say, we'd probably have to do some type of study and bring back results if you're looking for that type of data. I don't know that I have that information readily available.
Have we done anything like that in the recent years, Denise?
Wasn't that part of the, Mike's responsibility, come back with a need survey?
Mr. Flynn did complete a market study, and it did show a need for rental units. I don't, I don't, I haven't read it recently, I don't recall exactly what the breakdown was, but we can certainly provide that to you. You also have your RENA requirement, Regional Housing Needs Assessment requirement, that you need to meet, and I'm not sure what our outstanding RENA requirement is, but I'm sure Amanda has that.
Okay, that might be.
I'm not sure if she's still here.
Yeah, what we did is, we did a marketing study, not for the entire city of what was needed, because, you know, we did the same thing for Hamilton, the higher-end stuff was needed, we did things for Trianna, which the moderate income was needed, and now the low is needed. I mean, we need housing all the way across the board. So saying that, we have a marketing study, we have given it to staff, it does support, we looked at it from supporting, does this project make sense? Can this project get absorbed? And the answer was yes, based on the marketing study. So, but we, we did this for Trianna, we did it for Hamilton, so it's just all factors of housing seems to be a need. The, one other thing that I wanted to be clear about, we have done an initial proposal, okay? And an initial proposal, when you're looking at a piece of land, when I started this, I didn't know what I was going to have to pay for the land with the island company. I didn't know how much money you guys had to participate in. I didn't know what the temperature was for the nine percent tax exempt bonds. There's a lot of things out there. Infrastructure is another one. We've made some assumptions, but we just, since, since the holidays, we've been doing specific site plans, doing, putting numbers to it, figuring out what it is, and then with that number that we have as a gross project, which you may find by sitting down, we may have more money available, we could have less money available. But the point being is, is you have to go through that exercise to be able to determine it, and, and it's, it's a civil, structural, soils engineering, I mean, all the things, but you got to know you have a project, so you go spend the money to find out if it even works. So that's kind of where we're at with this whole thing. And one of the problems, I think, that you'll have for anybody coming in, I mean, we run into this over and over again, is land. I mean, it's, you got to get a piece of land that somebody's willing to sell, none of us have it unless we buy it from somebody else, so, you know, that, that's part of the RFP process that you have to go through.
So the negotiations would reveal to us things like Tremont Hall would be gone, correct, where this project is going? Right. Water, parking, vehicles, things like that? Is this, so we, we extend this for another six weeks? Is this what you guys are going to talk about?
Right, we, we could focus on those. We'd primarily want to detail more the infrastructure that we were alluding to earlier, but we could also speak in greater detail to the proposal for Tremont.
Okay, yeah, because that's part of our infrastructure, is recreation and, and the, and the needs of our, the souls and minds of our, our population here in Avalon. I mean, Tremont Hall is really important building to us. If that's gone, you know, we're going to miss it, just like the Berg Park's gone, or we missed that already. We can't have any more of our, these things traded away from us for the people that are here. I mean, you know, for a place that doesn't have a yard and, and you can't have, you don't have a garage, and you don't have a patio, and you don't have, I mean, I'm just concerned about the, the state of mind of people.
The purpose of the exclusive negotiating period is to see if the city and Mr. Flynn can come to an agreement on a development agreement, which would dedicate, would actually set aside that three point eight million, and one of the big things that our role as city attorney and staff is to say that if you're going to commit to this, that the project will actually be built in the end. And one of the major issues that we have is infrastructure, because it is a nineteen million dollar project, and we do not want the city to undertake a project when the infrastructure. when the infrastructure needs turn out to be greater and there's a shortfall in funding. And therefore, you're asked to, to provide additional funding for it. Or the funding from the sources is not sufficient to cover the infrastructure, and then you've got a half-built project. So part of the reason we want to really look at, and the big, the big issue right now is, is the infrastructure. How much is it truly going to cost? What are the true demands that we'd place on, if this was a private developer? What kind of demands would we place on a private developer? Because again, the downstream infrastructure costs are the same, whether it's a low-income project or a high-income project. I mean, if it's, if it's a hundred people, you're going to get the same effluent from a hundred people.
Never mind, I won't be commenting. Okay, and what is that?
Sorry, Elizabeth.
She's used to it.
You know, and we're also doing, working with transportation, we're going to be working on transportation, and parking, and congestion, and all of that. When do we talk about perhaps we don't end up with forty-four new golf carts? You know, we do something that is, that reduces that greatly, or they have to rely on public transportation, or something. I think that's something that we might end up wanting to impose, not just on yours, but on other things. So, right? I mean, I'm not looking forward to forty-eight new golf carts, or old golf carts, you know?
I, I agree.
We've got ten more last week, so.
We got to, we got to sit down and look at all that stuff. If it doesn't make sense for the community, we shouldn't do it. And, you know, we should do something else with the money. But they, at the time when we entered into this, the interest was to move forward with a mixed residential use, because that seemed to make the most sense. So, and it, and just to speak to Tremont Hall, it's not going away. We were, we were proposed to replace it. We just put it in a different location, something more accessible to people, and, and make it new. So I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, I would hate to think, you know, we go all through this with you, and then we, we start imposing all this stuff, and you go, wait a minute.
Well, I mean, there, I mean, it's, it's, it's like Hamilton was, it's like Trianna was. I mean, there, there's a point where it doesn't make any sense. So, and there's a point where you just have to say, I can't do that, and it doesn't work for everybody, and that's okay. I would love to be able to sit in a room, get everybody up to speed, figure out what we got, what we have to do, and simply say, you know what, we tried, it didn't work out, or, okay, everybody feels good about it, let's move forward with it. I mean, it's just a, for, for me to just keep doing more studies and spend this and spend that, do the time with staff and everybody else that needs to be doing all this stuff, we, we're at a point where we really need to do some pretty black and white things. Just like tonight, you guys have structural engineers looking at things. You have a project, you're trying to see if you can remedy that project. We have to do the same thing with any kind of new project. We've got to look at all the infrastructure. You got to see what it does to the overall system, both roads and, and everything else. I mean, we've talked about the meetings we have.
And we have, and Mr. Flynn has committed to getting us a project application, so we could actually commence these studies. And we would certainly need that before we would be able to actually finish analyzing. We don't have an actual project application yet. As, as he said, he's done some initial site planning and things. But without an initial application, we can't actually look at the infrastructure issues, the transportation issues, or any of the environmental issues. You know, and we can't make any sort of determinations on how to proceed. So we would be hopeful that within the, if you were to extend that agreement within the next six weeks, we would actually get a, a project application. Otherwise, I think we'd find ourselves with sort of the same questions when that E&amp;A expired again.
If I could just correct anything, because I just looked at the E&amp;A. It actually extends it through March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. So it's actually ten weeks. And just so the council, so the commission knows, during this time, all staff time and all of attorney fees that we spent on this is paid for by the developer. This is no cost to the city.
Sorry, Mike.
That, that are reasonable.
Sorry. My fees are always reasonable, Mike.
So you confident that you could get the work done, that we need, and the answers that we need, and the, the things that we've addressed tonight as a council in, in that time?
Well, part of it is depends on the information that we get from the developer. And it's not, we, we can analyze what we get, but we need information.
Can you help our staff understand that a little bit more, Mike, so that we, as a council, can understand it and, and bring that to the attention of our constituencies?
Absolutely. And, and again, I would, I would encourage some sort of a workshop. We did it before, it was a different council, different housing authority, and that's kind of in part how we got to where we are. So, you know, with both things, you know, running simultaneous tracks, I think, makes a lot of sense. Because I don't want to come back here and try to convince you guys. I mean, we're working on this together. It doesn't work without you, it doesn't work without somebody like, like us, so.
I, I guess one of my main concerns is, and, and this would be a discussion with the Blues for this one point, perhaps, is, okay, if we, as a council, decide we want more moderate, some additional moderate income housing available, how do we accomplish that with the money that we have, if that's possible? And you don't need to answer that now, but that's a big question, how we do that. Because, you know, personally, we've got that house sitting up, the units sitting up there in East Whitley that have not been rented, and I think that's terrible. And I would love to see those things rented immediately. Even if we had to pay somebody a small percentage to manage a, like, maybe the shame of sitting there, because I'm not willing to take a loss like was presented to us when we had a, you know, so, so that's two units there. And I know, anyway, and it's something we have to discuss all of this out. And I don't know if today's the day, or, or what other day it is, but when do we talk, when do we set up that policy and make that, give that direction?
Well, part of our thought tonight was that you, you could give us that direction. You could say, I want, I want you to do this with this money.
Well, for example... The units doesn't cost us any money. That's making us money.
For example, if your direction is you want us to focus on moderate income versus low and very low, then we could look at projects that would do that with the funds that you have available. That may not be consistent with Mr. Flynn's proposal, and so we may need to look at, at projects other than his, if that's what you want to do. Just knowing the nine percent market, if his units were all moderate, for example, he wouldn't qualify. He wouldn't get funding. So that would take his out of the mix.
Then the question would be, then who would want to do that? And then if, if the island company is the only land, what is it, what's the advantage to them? Or, you know, I mean, all of that. And maybe that's a discussion with Island Company as well. I don't, I don't know. If, if they're the only landowner, if that's how, I'd be curious, what else is?
So some of those are questions that we're never going to be able to answer for you. I think the only way to get the answer to some of those questions would be to put out a request for proposals and see what you get. If we put out a request for proposal that says we've got a million dollars or five million dollars, whatever the number is, and then you give them four months, and your local developers and developers from town come across, and they negotiate their deals and try and buy a piece of property or get into escrow, and then they can submit a proposal, and then we have an idea of whether or not our market supports moderate, or it supports very low, or that's probably the most efficient way to do it. Will it be successful? I can't guarantee that. You know, I don't know that, you know, for all of the reasons that Mr. Flynn has raised, I don't know that we can get somebody to come over onto the island. I, those are questions I, I'm never going to be able to answer for you with all the studies that we do. It's just a matter of testing the market to answer some of the questions that you're raising.
So if we gave him all the low-low, do we have, then do we have moderate money left?
If you fund Mr. Flynn's project, you will have a million dollars left. That would not be sufficient funds to fund an additional project. You would be able to do some small rehab, maybe, or some down payment assistance, maybe some, some rental assistance-type programs. But a million dollars, I don't believe, would be enough of a subsidy to make a project pencil here on the island.
Is it enough to rehab some of our housing that we have, like East Whitley project, which is...
Yes, you could use it. Yes, absolutely.
Can I ask a dumb question? On the staff report, it says we've got five point eight million available in income housing funds. Thirty-six thousand in the AHA General Fund, two hundred and sixty thousand in lieu.
So you have, you've got about three hundred thousand dollars in your Housing Authority General Fund. And that can be used only for low-income projects, not moderate. In the former ACIA funds that came over to the Housing Authority, you have three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars approximately in cash. That can only be used for low-income and very low-income projects. You have four point two million dollars roughly in properties. So that isn't actually readily available cash. It's, you know, tied up in land. You have about one point two million dollars in future receivables. We're not going to see that money for anywhere from five to thirty years. That's going to trickle in from loans that you've made that'll get paid back over time. So I wouldn't really count that one point two million dollars in the mix, because it's really not cash on hand that we can do anything with. And then you have your four point three million dollars or so in bond proceeds.
Oh, the extra money comes from the receivables.
Yeah. So we have to count it.
It's not laid out very well in this document, sorry.
The flow is perfectly balanced.
Yeah, sorry.
We, we have to count it for purposes of what you actually, as a, in the positive column. But when you're talking about cash on hand, I think that one point two million dollars is, is in the future sometime. Yes, you will get repaid that, but it's not anytime soon. So it's not money we could put towards a project within the next five years. So you really have about four point three in, in bond proceeds and about a million dollars, about five million dollars total, sorry. Four point three in bond proceeds, about seven hundred thousand dollars in other cash. So really about five million dollars available to you today.
And you do have the properties listed, including, again, if it was the commission's direction, you could take some of that money, spruce up the Whitley, not sell it, and those units then would be immediately available.
Yep. Or you could make the East Whitley property available to affordable. How, we could put out a request for proposal for somebody to come in and make a proposal on how to develop that property. Maybe they tear it down and put more than two units on it. I'm not sure what they could do. But that's another option, is we could put out a request for proposal specific to the East Whitley property and say, we've got this property and maybe some cash available. Give us your best offer.
But we have no water.
No, you have water there.
We have water there.
For additional units?
No.
No, for additional units?
For the existing units.
Yeah.
So, I mean, then, yeah.
So we have units. We can, we can provide housing to people for. I mean, we can open up. We can make more affordable and dignified, or at least the dignified part of it. So after the six weeks, this exclusive negotiation with Mr. Flynn's company, I mean, at that point, if we're not satisfied with some of the information that, that we get from him, we can, at that point, either we extend the negotiation process, right, and we keep talking to him about this, or we can stop there and we can say, well, let's open this up for a request for a proposal. Is that what we're doing here?
Or, or you could enter into an agreement.
Or you could enter into an actual agreement, saying that we're done negotiating, we're ready to go.
We're going.
Okay, well, I don't see any harm in that, especially if we have a million to put into our own property that we could probably provide a little better housing. I mean, can we put that million in, I mean, can we split that up between several of our properties? Like, to, to make them better? Are these properties ready for rent right now, or are they occupied, all of our properties?
So with East Whitley, there are a couple that are occupied, but we could, we, we could make some available for rent.
And we have some infrastructure issues up there, correct, at that property?
We do.
That we need to dump some money. So, hey, you know, no one's going to buy that. I mean, it's going to be worth a lot less if we don't fix it up anyways. That's probably why we're not selling it, is because somebody knows that they're going to have to put millions into it in order to, to, you know, make it a, an appealing asset. So, you know, I don't see any problem with, at this point, you know, I've grilled, I've grilled the issue enough to where I feel confident, to where we should probably just go ahead and do this. I mean, I, I'm not sure, but it's not a bad idea to go ahead and see what Mike has to offer at this point. If we can, you know, if we don't feel comfortable after a certain amount of time, we can back out of it. And we can put a request for proposal out there, get some other companies in here, and, including Mr. Flynn and himself, if he wants to come back into it, and, and, and see what the best offer is. But at this point, you know...
Okay, so is that a motion?
Yeah, that's, that's my motion, is to accept this, this six, this six-week, eight-week agreement and see what we've got after that point.
So can I restate it for you? You're moving to hold over Item Three, and moving to approve Item Two. Item Two is the extension.
Okay.
And Item Three is the disposition of the money, what, what we're going to deem the appropriate goals for the city. We're not sure what that is right now.
Right. You're really good at this, too. Yeah, thank you very much.
I was very, very impressed as well. Okay, there is a motion from Joe, as stated by Ollie. Is there a second?
Second.
Public discussion?
Come on.
Okay. Motion and a second? No further comment?
Call for it.
All eyes.
So then we're holding over Item Number Two.
No.
Okay.
Well, the, the workshop will continue.
Right, okay.
So now we go over. Okay, we'll be going to close session.
We're going to close session for the, we're, we're ending our recess. Oh, hang on. Let's adjourn the housing.
Right, we need to adjourn the housing.
Housing Authority adjourned.
And we're going to close session for two items for the council meeting, which is back from recess. And one is existing litigation, the Hermosa Hotel matter, and then public employee performance evaluation, City Manager.
And we are back from closed session. Any reportable action?
None.
No any further comments?
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony, meeting adjourned.